Comment for any items not on the agenda tonight. Let me ask, is there anyone here who is interested in an ECL item? We can, I would move that we move the ECL item to the first action.
Okay, one more public comment?
Not on this item, but we're gonna have a public comment.
Okay.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Try to hear the motion.
The motion is to have ECL item in the first action item.
So before consent?
No, in the first action item. Instead of third.
Sure, okay.
Roll call please.
I'm sorry, number Mary?
Yes.
Number Mary?
Yes.
Number Pat?
Yes.
Was it an animal?
Yes. Items for public comment.
Good evening, everyone. I'm James Kaskina. I'm ready for the school board, and when you open it down, you won't see a statement here from me. And that's because it cost $894 to put a statement in the down panel, and I just didn't have that amount hanging around. So I don't have a statement in the down panel. Thank you.
Other public comments?
Yeah, I'll follow up that with, people here may remember, a couple of years ago, I came to the board and I requested that the, in this, in service, to the effort to increase democratic and citizen participation, that the district put money aside so that it doesn't cost almost $900 for citizens to run for school board. And then the money could be doled out to candidates, and I was told by this board that that is actually illegal. So then I did a little investigation, and I found out it is not illegal. We could do that if we so desired, and I think we should do that, because $900 is too much to expect for, we're gonna get a certain kind of person to sit on the school board when you charge $900. And it's not gonna be the kind of person I say that you want to have an effective citizen engagement in the schools. So I think you should revisit this, and I think you should set aside money enough for, I don't know, some reasonable amount to have maybe fund five or six people to run every two years, so we can pay the, I don't want me to count any of the money, so that candidate statements can be in service, as I said, in an effort to increase democratic participation, and it is legal, and I think we should do it. But I wanted to deviate for a moment, talk about the last city schools meeting, pardon me, a couple, a few days ago. Vice Mayor Donahue was presiding, presiding, and I just wanna say that Councilmember Donahue is sort of, he doesn't know how to run a meeting. And the way that he ran the meeting is the way that a lot of school board meetings have been run. I'm calling it the John Affleck School of Public Policy. And that is, you put the citizen comments, public comments, at the very end of each item after all the discussion has happened. Setting up the, it's sort of like letting us speak, but not listening to us. As many will recall, last year, Mr. Affleck finally decided to allow the parents and the citizens weigh in on the wisdom of closing Annie Yates Elementary School. Mr. Affleck, president, school board president Affleck, finally decided to let us speak to that after having stopped it for many years. And then he announced to us that we can go ahead and speak, but he won't be listening, he's already made up his mind, that ballot's already been run, he told us. So the way that Mr. Councilmember Donahue's ran this city schools meeting was like of that, from the, I'm calling it the John Affleck School of Public Policy. The idea of to shut citizen participation down by putting the comments at the very end of the section after the deliberation has happened by the decision makers. And if you wanna shut down participation, that's the best way to do it. Sort of leaves us in the audience thinking, why are we here? And so, I presented to Mr. Affleck, your understudy as councilmember, Donahue, you would be proud of the way he ran the meeting last week, the city schools meeting. You should check that out, it's on tape. He did you proud. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
So I have a, I have a comment about my space here. Can I make that comment now, or should I wait?
The, it's the music room, I'm sorry, I'm Tom Southmore, I'm the music teacher. Yeah.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll just be real fast.
So I think we're gonna take those comments of the ECL item.
Okay, so.
You can, you can make the comment now.
I'm asking the board, I want to respect the board, so you want me to wait?
I would prefer we have all the ECL comments together in the ECL item.
Sure. Thanks for the clarification.
Any other public comments on items not on the agenda? Want your reports? We have a report from ETA.
Good evening. My name is Mark Davis. As of July 15th, I am ETA president, taking over for Don Turner. He's served for the past five years, and did so admirably. So, in about 14 hours, we get students arriving on site. And as of today, teachers remain very concerned. They still, even though the Turner crews have been working diligently and hosing things down and trying to clean it up, it still remains a construction site. So this week, we've had three teachers injured, one broken foot, twisted ankle, and one teacher had her face accidentally sprayed with paint. Unfortunately, she was wearing her husband's sunglasses, so she didn't get damage to her eyes. Many feel that if the majority of our students were of a different complexion, this school would not be opening tomorrow. We've waited four years. Many feel it's another week. Personally, I've been on the site since August 15th and have been unable to get a lot of work I need to do in the classroom due to various items, inspections, that couldn't happen right away for elevators. Move that took place was kind of, we were given very careful instructions on how to label boxes, prepare things, and stuff ended up all over, and then, I can speak to my own case, it was literally dumped, and boxes smashed, books scattered. So it took a lot of hunting to try to get things together. We do have some pretty smart, smart boards, oh, sorry, interactive whiteboards. So that everybody is grateful for that, look forward to it. Teachers are not happy with these new telescoping desks that were purchased with teachers. Not that they are, they're attractive, but they're not functional. They, they don't have any drawers. And spaces is really hard to find these days. So, we're trying to figure out and work through that, because many of us packed away items and boxes, such, you know, desk items, you know, files, we have confidential things that need to be locked up, we have materials that are expensive, that if they disappear through, you know, somebody walking away with them, you know, what do you do? So trying to find space to secure materials is of concern. Then we came into the room to find that some of our cabinets in every, two of the tall cabinets in every room were labeled "City of Emeryville After School Program." That put a real crunch on space available for teachers teaching three subjects in six classes. So that's, that's a problem, and what we'd like to see is the school board to fight for the school. And I know the city has their agenda, the city has their wishes, but we're still the school, we're still trying to educate kids, and we really think that this was one that caught us by surprise. Finally, I have been getting all kinds of feedback and rumors, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it to you, I wanna be straight with you guys tonight, and I wanna ask you plainly simple. You know, I'm getting rumors, well, the school might, other elements in society that wanna see the school go away, you know? They think that there's a business interest that wants to see ECL, just use it as a city rental, you know? We'll use the spaces, however. All this stuff tends, and there are other arguments on the other side, and they all come out of, you know, what I would call the smoky corner. But I'm gonna ask the board, I'm gonna ask everybody here, are you willing to commit to the sustainability of the K, pre-K 12 school here into the future, individually? Are you, are you willing to take that commitment? You know, and I'm gonna ask that same question of any candidate for the school board. Because this year, unlike others, ETA will endorse, we will put our endorsement on candidates. We haven't done it in the past, but we will going forward. And that's what we're gonna ask. We wanna know where people stand. So we're looking for strong leaders to fight for our children, not play politics with the city. And I understand that there's money involved here, the city has put money into it, but some people have complained that some of the city officials are talking kind of boldly like we're visiting their site, and so it's, it's a little friction, you know? I don't know what you can do about it, but anything you can do about it is greatly appreciated, and that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
I wanna take a moment and thank Dawn for her years of service, they were appreciated, and thank you for that. Mark, I wanna thank you for stepping up and having the courage to speak. I do wanna correct one thing, is that there aren't classroom monitor, whiteboards, as you call them, in every room. There are no televisions in the special ed classes at this time. So they're not quite in all the rooms, they're in most of the rooms.
Do we have a CSEA report? Superintendent's report?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'll start by, actually, Mr. Davis's comments about the sustainability of our new facility are very connected to some of the things I wanna share tonight. Mr. Davis, thank you for mentioning that. And I'll add, Mr. Davis, there are individuals who do not wanna see the district continue as a district. They would like to see the district dissolve, and some of them are in the room with us tonight, so I'm appreciating that, that you mentioned that. It's a real issue, and I'm not sure everyone will be honest about that issue, so I appreciate that. However, as your superintendent of the district, my goal is that we do exist, that we have the greatest teachers we can have, yes, with great teachers for our children in Emeryville and any students that attend our schools. In that vein, part of my update tonight, board members, I'll just pass this down, if you received this in the mail last week, but we have flyers mailed to all the residents in Emeryville and surrounding areas, letting people in the neighborhood and the community know about our new facility, letting them know about some of our programs that we have, because I certainly wanna make sure people know that we have a K-12, a T-K-12 facility that's a great place for their children with some really great, amazing teachers. So, part of my update tonight is just to let the board know that we got this out in the mail about two weeks ago, probably to, I believe, the word I don't recall if the number was 5,000,000, went out, but excited stuff happened. Part of my update also is just, there was an individual board member request last time that we met regarding our parcel tax, and I thought as part of my update, I just would confirm for the board and the community that there is no discrepancy that we're aware of with the parcel tax budget. I will reach out to the parcel tax committee, but we look very on target based on our years, I think there's an error possibly in the suggestions that came to the board last time, so I just wanted to follow up because I was asked by a board member to make sure we didn't have a deficit, and we look very on target, so I'll check with the parcel tax committee on that as well, if I think there's some confusion. And I guess I wanna say a couple of things about the site. I, I know part of my role as superintendent when I was hired a couple of years ago was to bring this project across the finish line. And board members were very explicit about that, so I'm honored to be part of that process, it has been a difficult process, and I've never been through a construction process before, so there's a lot I've worked through the process. But we are here now, and I'm excited, we have many, many teachers, I'd say the majority of our staff, why I know their concerns, and I'm sure people are here to express it. I think many of our staff are excited to be in these new classrooms, to have a safer facility, to have a lot more space for our children, and I'm excited to be part of that. So, I know over the years, well, I guess I'll say that, I'm excited to be part of this history with the staff in Emeryville, because we really have made a history, I think, I know it's a 12-year, very long road for us to get this site complete, and I'm very happy to be part of that with the teachers, and what I think the benefit it gives to our students, so that's my opinion, thank you.
Superintendent?
I have a couple of questions and things that you mentioned.
It's not really time for questions and comments.
I can answer a couple of my questions.
Superintendent's report?
Yeah. Thanks. So I'm glad you mentioned this flyer, because I brought my copy here, and I had several people point out to me that it wasn't reflective of our demographics, and it was really shocking to me, I think the center picture is two of our students, but, you know, we're a school that serves 75% African-American students, and so I just wanna know, what was the decision-making process in developing this flyer to go with two white football players that you had to blur out their name because they're not Emory football players?
Remember, Pat, I will tell you that my goal is to represent the great diversity that we, we are lucky that many districts don't have anymore in urban areas, and I did use some students, in fact, some of the students in the back are also our students, our teachers are in the back. So, that is a stock photo, because I was looking for what I felt was something close to the high school colors, and while I can appreciate the fact that your question is regarding the proportionality of the, and I don't know the racial background of the two young ladies who graduated two years ago, but I think, in my opinion, this represents the diversity of our district. Well, yeah, I see, I see, so I think I'll leave it at that.
And then the parcel tax question was very specific, it was, the amount that we had budgeted this year was significantly greater than it had come in previously, and the question was, what accounted for that difference? And so, I don't know that that was, you just sort of said, oh, no, everything was good.
I can answer that, I can, I can answer that, I thought, I was trying to answer it, so my apologies, I didn't quite get there for you. We are estimated at 2.55 million, which is, I think last year we were estimated at 2.5 million, and so, we were only off by about $30,000 or $40,000 last year, so I, I have a, I reached out, and I needed to get some more information from the parcel tax today, because Ms. Sue and I can't figure out what they were looking at, why they believe there's a discrepancy. So your, one of your particular questions to me, and that is what left me, was that, is there, is there a $100,000 hole? So I, part of my update was intended to respond to your question, saying, no, there's not, I don't see anything at all that appears to be the case.
Thank you.
Sure.
I don't have a specific board president's report, I'll save my comments for the items that are needed, other than to also thank Dawn Turner for her service both willingness to serve as a representative of the teachers, and also ability to be open and work with the wider superintendents, board members, and district staff, so I appreciate that we should be brought in that position. And also to welcome Mark Davis, who's been the vice president for, as long as I've been on board, I don't know precisely how long, but I'm glad to see you're willing to step up and build this term, she is a very important role in the district. We're on the consent calendar. Do we have any items that we want to pull from the consent calendar? I know we wanna pull Personnel Actions.
And in the minutes, I, well, Ms. Collins, if you'd like to, could imagine, I mean, the attached issue.
So we're gonna pull, we have to pull and vote on, because we won't have a one of the 10 minutes. Any other items? Ratification list, 5.5. All right, so we, and then, so, I'm gonna go ahead and vote on the non-pulled items, which is 5.1, Lawrence, and 5.4. So moved, second, I'll second, roll call please.
Number Mary?
Yes.
Number Pat?
Yes.
Visiting Anvil?
Yes. Chair is 3-0, the votes are approved. Item 5.2 has been pulled, item 5.3 is Personnel Actions. The rest, present to us.
Good evening, board president, board members, and I am so happy to see a lot of our teachers back this year. I wanna start by introducing the new teachers. We are asking you to approve the hire for this evening. Some have been able to attend with us tonight, and some have not, but I will introduce, I will give statements about all of the teachers, and ask those who are with us to just stand so that people can see who you are. I'll start with Mrs. Anna Tom. Miss Tom's journey to become a teacher began in rural parts of South Africa and South Korea, where she has worked as a volunteer and as a teacher. She was drawn to EUSD because of the district's commitment to promote educational equality. We have Ms. Teresa Munoz. Ms. Munoz has taught art in many settings over the past 20 years, she has taught in both private and public schools in the Bay Area, and she has worked with the Palo Alto Art Center, Curiosity in San Mateo, and with the Arts Venetia in Venetia, California. We have with us this evening, Ms. Dawn Luisa. Ms. Dawn Luisa is a registered nurse with the California Board of Nursing, and she is a certified audiometric screener. In her commitment to her nursing career, Ms. Luisa has worked with Alte Bates and Kaiser Hospital, she has also worked with the Open Head Start, and she did her student nurse work at Emory University. We have Mr. Elliot Lawson, who we've hired for security, and in addition to his security work, Mr. Lawson is pursuing a degree in early childhood education. He has also worked as a tutor with the Charter School in Richmond, and as a nutrition educator with the American Heart Association. We will also be hiring as one of our playground cafeteria monitors, Ms. Delicia Tate. Ms. Tate has a bachelor's degree in psychology, and has worked with the Emeryville Recreation Department since 2008. Ms. Tate is familiar with our students through working with many of them at the department, which contributes to the district goal of creating a sense of family. So two of the people I've introduced are with us tonight, the others could not make it.
Well, we're excited to have all of these individuals joining our community, and she got acquired, but Dawn or Ms. Luisa, if you'd like to come up and say anything to us, let us know, if you're comfortable where you're at, that's my thing.
She did a great job introducing that.
She did a good job. Well, we look forward to working with you both in all of these hires, and we really appreciate your interest in furthering education for our students.
I might add something, if you don't mind, this is part of our interview process with the board, those, we try to be very, very thorough and diligent, so we wanted to say we appreciate every advocate coming through the process this year, because we have over 300 advocates over the course of the spring, a lot of individual screening, we did Skype interviews with Ms. Tom while she was in China, we tried to work out the time difference, and she sent videos of her teaching, and Dawn Luisa was an intern with us before coming on board, so in her school nurse capacity, so there's a little more information from the board, since our new candidates are a little shy. And welcome.
Right, just a clarifying question, was, Ms. Luisa, thank you for coming on board, are you an RMM or a school nurse, or both?
I am an RMM, and my school nursing for the children is pending.
Oh, good, okay, thank you. Welcome on board, and I'm glad to have you on the ologist, our ology drink as well.
Yeah, I'm certified as new screening.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt item 5.3, so moved, second, I'll second, roll call please.
Number Mary?
Yes.
Number Pat?
Yes.
President Anvil?
Yes. Motion carries 3-0. Ratification list, number Mary?
Yes, I have a couple items here, and I don't know if Mr. Baker can assist in this, but there were several items that are on the list. And I lost some numbers that if you can clarify, Mr. Baker.
What are we on right now? What point, what, where are we on the agenda?
We're on item 5.5, the ratification list.
Thank you.
Mr. Baker, I have the attachment that sent us, 22 Amendment according to COR numbers, so this, so this, or so. Item 264, which is a guardrail clarification. Can you give me a little bit more on this? It seems that normally guardrails are of a certain height, and was it a height issue, was this a configuration issue?
These are guardrails along the entrance to building B, and DSA, in their review, did not require a guardrail there. The inspectors cited the height and code for the, the use of that passageway, did need to add guardrails there.
Was the height exceeding 30 inches?
Yes. What it does is, it varies from less than 30 to more than 30.
The second one is item 413, it's power lighting. Did the original plan meet the code requirement for minimum lighting requirement? As a 1.1 foot candle, is this over and above what we needed?
No, this was the light fixtures underside, underneath the canopies, were not included on the price set that was prepared by DSK and priced by Turner. The DSA did not, did not catch that lighting, the RF5 went out quite some time ago, and so lighting had to be added to one of those canopies, light fixtures.
Next item is 262, which is a roof deck detail. I'm looking at this as an Arizona mission on behalf of the architect, unfortunately. Is that your assumption on that?
That's correct.
The next one is, I'm gonna say, item is number 535, which is walkway grades at basketball court. I'm looking at that description, code compliant walkway between D and E, I think that's under the walkway.
Correct.
Looking at that configuration, I don't conceivably think that, is it the slope of the walkway, or what was the?
It's supposed to be, there were elevation on the civil engineers' plans for layout. There were areas where the walkway did not line up, where it hit the pavement. That whole area there had errors in how the civil engineer had designed the work for the survey grades.
All right. And then the next one I have is item 495, where it says revise San Pablo Avenue sidewalk. I've run that sidewalk before construction started, and I didn't see the basic sidewalk as a sandblasted finish. So why are we incorporating a sandblasted finish, which is an expensive means of providing a finish on concrete when it's reserved back to the original and wasn't intended?
Those sidewalks were improved, I believe, 15, 20 years ago by the city.
And they used sandblasting at that time?
That's correct. And the project included adding sidewalks, a more modern detailed sidewalk that we have throughout the site, a more simplified detail. The city was not in favor of that. The city wanted us to restore the original architectural sidewalks all along San Pablo, which have tiled insets and sandblasted concrete. We tried a number of occasions to talk them out of it, frankly. We talked, we tried to at least have them talk out, talk them out of doing the sandblasting because the sandblasting was about $30,000, and they declined. The city does have jurisdiction over those sidewalks.
All right, and then finally, item 457. Let me read you through the description, says, I just want to know who changed the requirement? It seems like it was changed in mid-screen.
Which items did?
It was the added high moisture adhesive.
Ah, that's exactly what happened, in fact. It's a very, it's a, the specifications required for adherence with ASTM standard, which is a standard, I believe you're aware of, an ASTM standard, which is a standard that needs to be complied with. After bid and before we put the flooring down, the ASTM, ASTM standard changed. We've had this happen in a number of schools in regard to linoleum adhesive, and they changed the measuring, the way you measure soil moisture in slats from pH to relative humidity. And no one's able to pass that, that new test, so we had to, we had to see what they had.
And then finally, item 477, the wall steel changes.
Yes.
You know, in my experience, it's been that you look at a span table for a selective windows system, and you would get a ballpark if you needed steel or not. I got to admit, was the architect, did you know that?
What they did is they drew the design, the drawings, and specified a certain window system. And when the drawings came back, the window, the curtain wall manufacturer said they had to have steel in those to get the proper structural bracing in those large, these large windows. And they did not specify that in the drawings.
Did it go through defer approval process with the state architect?
It did go through with the state architect, and the DSA did not catch that also brought up product by the window subcontractor. They then had to issue a CDC or a construction change request to DSA, which was approved.
I have some questions for you as well, Mr. Baker. Just to clarify, the revised San Pablo Avenue sidewalk, discussing with Mr. Marion.
Could you talk louder?
That was $83,000?
Correct.
And that was something that the city required Public Works.
That's correct.
요구 Public Works, correct. I concur, number Marion, that there's nothing that looked special, industry unique about that sidewalk.
Not only that, as we, you know, the original plan, the bid scope work was to put an all-new sidewalk there that matched the sidewalks on 47 and 53rd. And the city Public Works notified us that they were going to require us to repair and match the sidewalk which had been installed 15, 20 years ago.
What was the rationale for acquiring?
That it had been installed as a plan to kind of have the same sidewalks all along San Pablo, because I think there are several blocks, they have those sidewalks in that picture. So they wanted to match the. Correct. The first city review we went through with Public Works and planning did not require that.
A number of these items were changes required because of Arizona mission for the DSK, the architect, correct? I guess we'll talk about that a little more.
We'll speak on the items. Correct.
The pool deck's subgrade, unforeseen condition, the original pool deck is $29,000, sitting on dirt instead of base rock.
It's unusual.
Yeah. It's unusual to place concrete without, base rock is a heavy gravel. The, as you recall, the, at the city's request, the board's approval, we added replacement of the pool deck to the pool scope work some months ago. And we pulled up that pool deck instead of gravel, which helps for drainage and stabilization. It was that they had poured that slab in the 1960s right under, so we had to excavate down the dirt and put about six inches and put base rock down so that the new pool deck would be stable.
That was a 1960s era.
Correct.
Correct. As we only discovered.
The original construction documents did not show any detail after that pool deck. So we didn't know whether it was poured or not. It's unusual, even in that era, not to put base rock under the slab.
And overall, were there any items on here that surprised you, or you saw all of these coming from?
These have all, as we always, these items were identified, fixed several months ago on the project. And as soon as we identify something, we make sure that it's compliant with the contract terms, and then we place an estimated cost in the budget. So these have all been included in our budget contingency for some time. This represents the final negotiation of each of these prices for these items with turn construction.
How are we doing our contingency?
I will, I'll show you that a little bit later in the season as well.
You anticipating further changes of?
Yeah, what we bring forth to the board is we don't anticipate further changes now, but we have again, as we negotiate this final prices. We have about the last $1 million worth of items to negotiate, and in the coming weeks, probably two more items, ratification list items, and also some board, board items for vote. But we are in the budget, we have not, and we carry the, we carried the first number we get from Turner, and then we negotiate that, and usually it comes in less by, you know, 10% or so on average. So as we negotiate those, and I'll talk about that process later, we then will finalize the price and then bring those forth to the board and ratification list. But they've been included in that overall budget for quite some time.
All right, we have a motion on item 5.5. So move. We have a second. A second. Roll call, please.
Number Marion?
Yes.
Number Pat?
Yes.
President Anvil?
Yes. Okay, that concludes our consent items. We're now on to our discussion items, and we, the first item, the, item 612, ECCL.
I'm sorry, you had to go full screen. Oops, sorry, John. Right. This is a pretty extensive item, and there are a lot of people here who want to talk about ECCL tonight. I first want to say that, that there's a large scene of people who've been working, working their tails off the last several weeks to cross the finish line. There is work that is not yet done, it is not work that has occupancy, I'll speak to that. With any new building, there are things we've worked out. We're going to, we are going to be here as long as we need to be here to help get things done, get to where they need to be. For the teachers who've been working with Nemo and Elizabeth, please continue to contact them at any time to, if there are any concerns you have, so that we can continue to make sure that we get everything done right and everybody's happy. There are people right up right now working, remember, we have 60, we include 60% of the subcontractors are from the local area. We've got over 40 labors from the needed Emeryville, North Oakland, West Berkeley area, who are working very hard as members of the community trying to make this happen. You know, we've got a ways to go, I'll talk about that. I'm welcome with any comments that you have, any questions. But there are a lot of people who've been working very hard to deliver this project for the people in this room and community. I'll start by saying that. Okay. Just as a reminder, in terms of the buildings, because we refer to buildings A, B, C, D, E. Building A is the community center, which is the corner 47th. Building B is administration along San Pablo. Building C is the 8th grade school, and then the rumor again, we're in C right now. Building D is the high school. Building E is the gym and pool. So the most important thing is all buildings and the site have approved, approved by occup, for occupancy by every agency having jurisdiction over this project. That includes the division of the state architect, who is the permitting agency for schools, and the inspectors of record. We have two full-time inspectors of record. Those inspectors and the field inspector out of the Oakland office have all approved the site and buildings for occupancy. It's a very important distinction because that's the legal, the legal approval for occupancy. State of California's approved all the elevators for use, that's a separate inspection. Almanac Health Department's approved all the kitchens for use, which is an important approval. And the notices of substantial completion have been issued by the architect, DSK, which is another requirement, contractual requirement. We do not have the only, we have no other sign-offs or approvals by governing agencies. The exception to that is for the stormwater throughout the site. That is something that the city of Emeryville has jurisdiction over, and that takes place over a year. They have to go through a rainy period, the rainy season to do that approval. In terms of occupancy, the only building that's not occupied is Building A. The city has not yet moved in that building, they will do that next week. Building B, administration, the two school buildings were all occupied last week, started occupancy last week. And gym building E is now the final, has final completion, where the warranty period in that building, with punch lists and everything completed. We had two courtesy walks over the last two weeks by the city of Emeryville Public Works. They again have no permitting authority, but they have jurisdiction over the sidewalks as I mentioned earlier. And also they're the one who oversees again the stormwater control plan. We had the Public Works Director in meeting today just to kind of talk about the portions of the project that they are concerned with, such as the signals also, signal sidewalks and stormwater. Almanac Fire Department is the first responder. Again, they're not the governing agency, whether or not DSA is in terms of fire life safety. We did a walk with them so they can understand how the, how the project works, where the fire line control panels are, where the hydrants are, and things of that nature. They had a few requests for some additional signage not required by COVID, which convenience would assist them, and we're in the process of putting that in. As you can see, the walk in the site, there is quite a bit of work that is not complete yet. The architects issued their punch list at substantial completion, which was over the last two weeks. All this is not work required for occupancy, but is required to be done for terms of contract to be done. The great majority of this is site work. There is some work inside in interior of the buildings that's not done, but I think as you'll see, that's much more really complete, we're really, that's mostly paint touch-up work and some other things. I'd be happy to listen to any other things that you're concerned aren't done yet tonight. Most of it's site work, though, and I want to kind of go through these things, what they are and when they will be completed. I want to talk also later about accountability, who is accountable for these things not being done, what the, how the contract works, and how those things sort of work. And I want to go through that as well. First is the sod at the community commons. That's been installed today, but we can't, we can't walk on that until Monday. That's a play area that will be ready for use on Monday. So the play structure that you see out by 50, on 53rd Street has been installed, but the rubberized area around that has not yet been finished. That will be ready for use for, use in play on Monday. Planting is the main thing. Almost all the trees are planted, I think about 80% of the trees are planted. The shrubbery, which obviously is not required for occupancy, will be going in. I want to talk later about when that work will be happening, but that still needs to take place, that will be done over the next couple of weeks. The multipurpose room partition, like you see, it's partitioned here. We had a fabrication problem with that, and so rather than have it kind of half-installed, we want to make sure that everything is complete. That will be installed by the 5th, a week from Monday. The sprint running track.
I need to know everybody. The play structure that referred to that could be used on the.
The one that we see up on 53rd, right, which is from the lower grade.
From Turner.
What about the wall hollow? The wall hollow was added to the project, later in the project. It comes from the Netherlands. Six months later, as we said, the Netherlands approved by the board to install that, exactly October. When the board added the project, we announced at that time that it would not be installed until October.
Okay. I appreciate your reminding of that.
What about the play structures that we have in that courtyard? The, the play structures that go to courtyard are portable basketball hoops, they're portable. Those that are inside, you just need to get them, those are stored, those come out, they're, they can be, they're not.
There were poles that weren't.
Were the poles, the poles were removed from the project because they were difficult to build, and we actually basically decided to do the wall hollow instead of those poles.
Okay. Are there other striking in, in for the courtyard? I recall there was lots of striking at one point.
We talked about the striking for four square and the direct aims. We've held off on that, and maybe the superintendent can speak to that.
I can. There was a change that we made. The city's original design, I think, for quite a number of years, really focused on this area as a more of a recreation weekend area, more than a playground. So after a number of conversations with them, I think we were able to get them to agree that, and this is, I don't always get to share it, just the extent that I will defend our space, so I do that, but I just can't really share it with the details. But I did make a very strong case for the city that we cannot have another mound in the middle of this area. And so we have more asphalt available now, and we're going to have some portable basketball nets, the nicest ones we could find. And the city, one of the city staff members and I are going to experiment and see different locations, so we decided to hold off on the striking temporarily. We can still strike for the four square, but we decided to hold off on some of the striking for basketball lines, and so we're sure where we want to place those.
Yeah, the commons design, we've, there's been much debate between the city. The city's viewed that as a community kind of park space. There's the school views it more as a player. The very reason we had those architectural poles taken out in the wall hollow instead was because it's more effective for play area. We also took, there was a large, sort of, you'll see there's one planter out there, sort of oval planter, we took one of those planters out to provide more play space. And then we've introduced some play equipment that can be wheeled into that space during school at time, and wheeled off the site when we have a kick, when there's a community down. Also, I want to point the fencing, the site fencing, the site is completely secure for occupancy. As you know, the site has different zones that are where you close off and open up areas at different times. All of the gates are in, the final fencing, the final fencing panels, you'll see some of those in, they're, they're iron with mesh. Those will be going in every day as we put those in, but in order to make the site sure the site is secure, we have temporary fencing throughout the site. By temporary, it's not fencing you can take down, it's chain link, the chain link will come down. And the architectural mesh panels, which are heavy-duty mesh, not lightweight, but they look like mesh, like the grid, those will be going up over the next seven days. Parking is available, all the parking lots are complete. The, then they'll be utilized by students, faculty, and teachers and staff tomorrow. The striking in the spaces, though, that will be done on Saturday. All of the 80 accessible spaces are marked, however. Also, we have permanent, we have signed, all the permanent parking signs, not completely have temporary signage throughout the site and on all three streets. On, as you see, that's, those are all marked, it's closely marked. The permanent signage will be done by the 5th. Library shelving is being installed now, will be done on Monday. There's a lot of touch-up painting. As you've seen, if you're in the classrooms, we've got blue tape where the touch-up paintings take place. Also, the steel beam elements, those diagonal beams, we rejected that work because it was, it was. it was painted, but it was over rough finish. They've grinded those down, so if you see some of that steel is not painted, it's because they ground them down. They'll be coming off hours to paint, finish that touch-up painting. One of their public comment, there was discussion about an injury to a teacher. At the entry to the K-8 school, that work, concrete complete work was completed at the end of July. We were very concerned about it because it had one small step. We talked to inspectors about that, the inspector says it was code compliant, we talked to the architects, they said it was code compliant, but Swinney should raise concern to the district that even though it's code compliant, we were concerned about it. We directed the architects to provide a different design. They did, they provided that design yesterday, took them a couple of weeks to work it out and get it approved for code, but in the meantime, someone tripped and injured themselves. So, that work is going to be going in, we're gonna tear concrete out and rebuild that so that trip passer is gone, and that'll be done by the fifth. But it's something that we were not happy with. The architect told us it was okay, the state inspectors told us okay, we were still worried about it, we told them they could change. They redesigned that now and had it approved by the permanent officials, and that will be done, but while we've been getting that redesign submitted, after we done, after we raised concerns once it was built, someone did injure themselves. And we also are working with the district's insurance company to make sure that that's, that that person is completely covered. I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Okay. F N E can, that was a new slide.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there's one, I apologize. There's one new slide, this is the one new slide.
So can we, I understand you're, you want to give us the most updated.
Correct, because this was submitted in the board package last week. This is one new slide.
So can we just update that?
Absolutely. In the past, when we've done that, you've updated that. Certainly. The moves, all of the moves are complete except out of the unit, it's a library, but everything else is, the city is the last, the last to move, they're complete this week, and then they move it next week. Furniture delivery is complete except for the tables and chairs in Building A, which come week after next. All of the security, audiovisual, fade and telecon systems are all operational, I want to point out. The two most important of those, which are security and fire, with fire life safety also, the district has a monitoring company called Convergent that monitors all those systems twenty-four seven. Those are up and running, so they monitor in their office. Also, they are monitored here on site by district facilities. We've had training, all those, all those, all those systems are up and running. The car keys have been distributed to all, to teachers and staff, and we'll work on those doors, all the keys have been distributed, but all these systems are up and running. I know a lot of teachers have been working with the monitors the last couple of days to understand how they work. Site safety and security, there's nothing more important than that. We have a security guard who is going to be continuing here evenings and on weekends until we reach final completion. They, I'll talk about the punchless work I mentioned earlier. Turner's, after this evening, they're out of here. They're only, they're, they're only going to be here after three-thirty on weekdays and on Saturdays, as approved by the city council. We're going to be working with the city and district in terms of, at three-thirty, you know, there's some after-school activities, especially the city's got after-school activities. We wouldn't work in those areas, but we're going to work around in the late afternoon to evening, and on Saturdays, they bring their equipment for the day, they do their work, and they take it away with them. We do have two storage rooms who are restoring some things, but that's going to be a, and if you see, if anyone sees any construction tools or things laying around in the morning, let us know immediately, because that has been, that is not allowed. Some quick photographs, a lot of people walked around the site. This is Building A. Concrete and landscaping are complete there, the city doesn't move in until next week. Many of you are in this room today doing training. This is Building A, multipurpose room. There's catering kitchen that's, that was, again, that's been completed, signed up by health inspector, Russian's all complete. This is Ms. Lisa Tameray, her new office last week. This is the district office. You know, when they were, they moved in last week, and are still continuing to kind of get things settled in there. This is the, the main lobby in Building B. The city's been operating this for the last two or three days for, this is where the, the city operates the space for recreation activities and other things, and so the public's been coming to this during the day and asking to sign up for classes and things of that nature. This is looking down from that lobby. The city, I like this slide because the city has an art program that the city runs. There are three art pieces. One has been installed, the two will be installed this fall, again during off-hours. One of those is a very large sculpture, which hangs from this space. These have not been installed yet, the city did not choose those artists until May of this year. The one piece which is done is, there's a Native American themed mural in the teen center, this is a city space off of the main lobby. The third piece are some sculptures that will go outside of the library, those will also be installed during, during the fall. This is the city's workspace, they're, they're now working. This is the second floor, which is the counseling, wellness, and student health center. This is the student health center, this is all complete, ready for lifelong to move in, lifelong is the county's operative, and they are going to be moving in over the next few days. This is the grand stair of the high school, the students will come in off of fifty-four seventh and up the staircase, these are in fact our students, who are visiting their teachers this afternoon. This is the library, these are from last week, the library was our staging area for, for furniture, and so this is all moved out, and now library shelving is going in. These are the library security devices so that folks don't walk out the door. These are our furniture folks, this is a week ago, this stuff's all out of here now. This is the city offices, these boxes are unpacked, and there's chairs in this room now, this is from last week, they're up for, and this is in the high school admin area. And the classrooms, I've got two classrooms, the classrooms in the high school are all complete. Those are all moved in, and they look great. We were visiting teachers all day, asking them to try and work that in, things are quite, quite working right, like some of the lights, and again, the monitors. This is one of the labs, you can see one of the monitors in use there, this is the teachers, they're kind of setting up in there. These will, these are all complete. Then at the K-8 grade school, this is the view from the, from the field, this is the exterior, going from the top floor down, the third floor, which is grade six, seven, eight, these are two, they're these sort of casual seating areas, they're out of woodwork where people could, the students can hang out and some sort of.
What's this picture from?
This picture's last week also.
Okay. So there's the girder, we asked you about.
Yeah, there's the girder, right, that's your girder, right. This is last week, the girder's gone. These, this is, these are pictures from today. The, I'd say the classrooms, there are still about four or five teachers who are upstairs right now, finishing up, doing, installing their furniture, but most of these are all moved in. Again, this is the third floor classroom, science classroom, another one on the third floor, and then this is that other area at the end of the third floor for seating and socializing. Sorry. I'm not sure why this is not.
You might just use your arrow keys and your key worker, you're in trouble.
Okay, that's a great idea.
If that helps.
There we go, sorry about that. Now we're down at the, this is the first floor, these are the, no, this is the third floor, which is grades two through five. A lot of these classrooms are really, this is the most complete of the floors in terms of movement in classrooms. This is one inside of the two, these are staircases, we'll primarily use, they will use the elevators if needed, but there's two big staircases that have a great view down to the field. Now we're at the first floor, which is the kindergarten first floor. This is one of our architects, Resvan, who's doing punchless back-check work last week. Classrooms are largely moved in down on this floor. Most of the, a couple of these are really complete now, or most of these are complete, I should say. This is the room we're in, this is before, this is again last week before we pulled the floor protection up. You can see there, we've got the cafeteria tables there. The kitchen you can see from here also, all those closed off, this is the server, so they're actually stocking that with food for tomorrow right now. And then the field, this is a view from the field. This was also taken last week, all this stuff's been cleared out now. This is all complete with the exception of that sprint track, which will be done for use on Monday. This is our nursery, a lot of this has been spread around the site now in terms of the shrubs, the trees are mostly in. You can see them doing, this is right outside here, you can see this, they'll be planting in those areas over the next week, the plants in those berms. This is an old photograph, this now, this lawn is now in, the trees are now in, this is now pretty much complete for your walk out there right now. And then along fifty-third, this is all been planted, this is again from last week, with shrubs. This is the city's greenway, this is the large sidewalk on fifty-third that's in the city's general plan, that has to have a large, I think twenty-five foot wide landscaped area, boulders, shrubs, mature trees as you walk down along the field. This is along here, this is planting these trees, these trees are largely in right now on the high school, again, this is from last week. More field shots from above. This is from the third floor of the K-8 grade school. There are the baseball dugouts, and this is our handy little turf maintenance machine that's part of the contract that the district will operate to maintain the field. And there's the swimming pool, which has been used for a while, pretty popular, and has been enjoyed by a lot of people over the last few months, couple months. Okay. I want to talk a little bit about change orders and how this works. This is an update that I give every couple of weeks, a couple of months. Again, the way this works, these are changes to the contract, so we, the district budget contingency, about seven million dollars contingency for things like this, and I'll explain what those things are. When that happens, when we, and when something happens, this can be something when the district wants to change, we find something underground that's, that we didn't know about, there are design issues with the drawings we need to fix. Turner's students noticed a change. We approve that, but they have to proceed before we negotiate costs, so they're at risk until we negotiate the cost. Turner students have changed the request, our estimators review every one of them for material quantities, unit costs, and also we can save some, some costs by re-engineering those things. We respond with a detailed review, and we immediately negotiate. So today, again, our total contingency for these items is about, is seven million dollars, so six point eight is what we've got. Caveat, this includes the pool and some things which are added. I can, but of those which we negotiated, which is the point of this, what was submitted was seven point nine. We've approved this for six point eight, so we've negotiated about one point one million dollars down from what Turner originally submitted. So we review every one of these to make sure that the bond dollars are being used properly, and everything is contract compliant. We, for example, they submit a price like this, we review it, tell them what they think is wrong, this one we negotiate down from thirty-three to about twenty-seven thousand dollars, and we do that on every one of the ones they submit. Just again, it's due diligence to make sure that we're doing this, to make sure that we'll stand up to audit as well. This is an update, and this is, kind of gets to the point that Mr. Merritt, Mr. Affbot made earlier, is that when the continuous budget, we budget for these categories. Unperceived conditions, two point five percent of construction, one percent for permit requirements, two for design errors and emissions, and one for contractor's contingency. We're hitting just about all those targets, we're a little high on the design errors and emissions, that's one area that we need to look at going forward, but the other ones we're right about where we, objectively. Now, these are things that are outside of when the district or city changes scope, such as when we added the pool and added some technology, such as these boards right here, and some other things. So the point of this is that we're not using, this is what we budgeted dollars for these, we're right about at that amount right now, and the district did put additional bond funds into the project, but those went towards enhancing the project, the pool, adding technology for furniture. Okay, to some terms of project completion, I want to talk about, this is kind of contract duty, substantial completion definition is where the buildings are complete for intended use when they can be occupied. To remember by DSA and the architect, the project contract date is July twenty-fifth, okay? So these are the dates that we actually reached, certified by, the building was done earlier, but A, B, C, and D, you see they're all about, they're about eleven to thirteen workdays late. But we did achieve those, those dates, which is why we can occupy the building. Turner's contract, they have a five thousand dollar day penalty for each day that they don't make those dates. They have to prove if there are things beyond their control that led to that. There have been, there have been some design issues, but there have been things that didn't contribute to that. So in the coming weeks, we'll talk about how we resolve that issue. I want to point out that, as I said, at the city's schools meeting, we do not anticipate approving one additional dollar in change orders for Turner related schedule. They're, they're on the hook for this in terms of dollars. I want to point out it's a very important point, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about that. Final completion, the date is September first, which is, which is next week. These are all the other things, there's operations and maintenance documents in, they have almost all those in right now. Final sign-off of permanent agencies, we now have that, there's no more permanent sign-offs to have, we achieved that. Completion of punchless items, that's a lot, that, there's a lot of punchless items. That's all the things I talked about earlier in the site, there are things in your classrooms that might need to be painted, cabin doors that don't work, a light switches doesn't work, a faucet that doesn't work properly, that stuff's all about to be complete before the warranty period starts, so that's important. The pressure now on Turner that they have achieved this, is they've got a, the warranty period, they're on the hook for that warranty period until they finish, until we say, okay, the warranty period can start. And there's a two-year warranty period, so if things aren't right over two years, we can call them back at no cost to fix it. It's a very important concept, so as we move into the school year, if there are things that aren't working right, we're going to be, we'll talk about the process, but basically staff and will contact facilities, facilities will work with us and Turner to get those things done. In terms of, my last slide here, moving operations and maintenance, building systems commission, start commission is where we make sure that everything is working properly, so that process has gone, we've finished that process, and things which aren't done aren't properly properly, we've got that on the punch list. Systems training, district and city staff, we've done a first round of that, where that's kind of ongoing to make sure everyone knows how to operate the thing. The city and as part of the joint operating agreement, the city and district have monthly programming meetings, once a month, in terms of how they program space. What classrooms are used for city after-school programs? When does the district use the gym or the pool, because the city operates those? And so that's going to be ongoing every month for the, probably the whole history of the ECCL, how you program that space, at what time to use your things. There's also monthly O M meeting with the facility staff of the city and district in terms of janitorial, cleaning, field maintenance, things like that. Again, two-year warranty period, which is going to start until Turner's finished absolutely everything. And then, one more thing I want to point out, which I gave a presentation to the board two months ago, that there, the citizens oversight committee had urged doing this. The buildings here are what are called solar-ready. What it means is that we can put solar panels on the roof, they were not included in the original project, I'm not sure what that, why that was, that precedes our involvement in the project, but you basically can plug in solar, solar panels. What we're, what, what the citizens oversight committee is advocating is something we have worked with many districts to do, which is, works out very well, is rather than paying bond dollars to put a system in that might become obsolete fairly soon, enter into what's called a PPA, and what that is, is that, is where you go into contract with the provider, the provider owns the system, they basically put the system and own it and maintain it, and then the district pays, buys electricity through that provider. It's, it'll reduce rate because it's solar, it's not P G E, and then after a certain time period, you can enter into a new agreement, they can put new technology on. But there's a longer presentation that, that we gave to the board a couple of months ago. We are including, we are basically helping the board at, at our cost, preparing and putting an R and P for that, we drafted that complete, and then reviewing that, we'll be reviewing that with the district and district council over the next few weeks. The industry standard, which is our regulations, you run the school for about a semester, some people go a whole year, you see what your power loads are, that kind of tells you how much solar you need, but that would be, that'll be going back to the board in the next few months to put all solar to the ECL. I'm sure there are a whole bunch of questions, and I know a lot of here today to talk about that, and I'm welcome to answer any questions that you have.
So, appreciate that thorough presentation, bringing us up to date. My, I guess, first question is, why this is right, like, we had it, why?
Yeah, so the.
Completion date and, you should, yeah, they, they, those are all delayed, and they're Those were all delayed and there's still lots of bits and pieces that haven't been finished.
Right, the big culprit bill has been the site work and site concrete. One major, one major issue is again a design issue, is that when they do the layout to put the site concrete, we had about, about 100 elevation and design things didn't work out. They laid out where a catlaze didn't meet, where the design of the top of the wall wasn't done correctly, so we had to sort all those out. That's really probably the main driver. And the site concrete has to go in first before we can do landscaping to follow up. We did our, as you can see, we finally finished our last piece of concrete today, so all the concrete is now done. That's the main thing that's not complete. We had a fabrication issue with the fabricator of the partition that we had to sort out, that was their fault, Turner's got to be responsible for that. I kind of went through those items that I talked, spoke to earlier, the major items. Everything else is really what we call a standard punchless item, like painting and things like that, but most of we have had issues with the site itself. We, again, the, for example, the fencing, the finished fencing panels are related to site concrete, so we had to sort out a bunch of site concrete issues in order to then install the site fencing. Other items, again, landscape, the landscaping follows the concrete. Really, the site concrete has been the primary issue. However, I will say this, it's not just design issues, it's also Turner, it's a least respect contract, it turned the onus on Turner to solve those things as well, which is why I don't foresee approving any change orders for extended schedule. And in fact, like I said earlier, they are at risk for $5,000 a day that they went beyond 725. So it really has been primarily the site work, as I think the building interiors were really pretty much done at the end of July. Again, punchless work, painting, things like that, there wasn't been quite, things that, you know, the architects' punch was not, but most of the issues have been the site work.
Well, it, yeah. It's wonderful to be able to move into a new facility and there are so many good aspects of this facility that are significant upgrades to what we had before. But buying a new house, there's anxiety about moving in, and it's like we're being delivered a house that's not fully ready yet, so. Can you tell us when we, you said September 1st seems to be a big date, but then beyond that, are you telling us that all the punchless stuff is going to be done September 1st or that's going to be a couple of months?
So if you look at, if you look back, those are the major things that I pointed out, that I have a completion date by all of them, and actually, most of those are Monday. There are a couple of things that will go beyond that. Punches with the pens, because for example, if we have a faucet, let's say we have a faucet that's not working right, it might take us four weeks to get a new faucet, or something like that. And so that's why we, we went, we asked the council for the opportunity to work evenings and Saturdays all the way through October, just in case we need it. The vast majority will be done by the midst of September. I think there will be probably some things that have long lead times, have to be ordered. But that's, we're going to, they'll be working every, after 3:30, every weekday and every Saturday, not Labor Day Saturday because it's three a weekend, but to finish those things.
The vast majority of it is September, correct? Okay. The courtyard in particular, and in that I'd, it's primarily, and its primary function is to be a supply ground, in my view, and that's what it's being used as most of the time. And even when the rec, the city rec center comes in after school, it's still primary function is supply ground. So it's only, you know, secondary function is as a park or a ground. So I hope that we, you know, continue conversations with the city to make sure that the primary function is primarily served.
Well, the city would probably not agree with you, and that's actually been one of the issues we've had. We've got one of the recent- Another contributor to that site, that courtyard taking longer to complete was we redesigned a bunch of elements because of the need to make it function more as a player. We had to go all the way to city planning, the planning director to make some changes, as recently as like about three weeks ago. So it is more than a player, but if you look at the original design, which did not have a wall haul-up, which had those poles, which were mostly an architectural feature, I think the ability of them to act as a play structure was questioned by a lot of people. It was really designed as a city park more than a player. So we made a number of changes, added the wall haul-up. We took out one of the plant, raised planters for more play area. We reduced the number of trees so there's more open space. And made those changes fairly late in the game because there was concern by the district that that wasn't really amenable to a player. So those changes were made. That is one contributor to why that's the last concrete that was done, though, is that we were trying to, to the last, really up till about three or four weeks ago with city planning, to get them to approve those changes. And the superintendent can speak to it, but it wasn't easy.
Starting tomorrow, the grass, I heard you say it's going to be off.
Correctly, everything, everything is complete now. The grass, except the grass can't be used until Monday.
So, other than the grass, we're going to- We have basketball hoops and other things to roll out tomorrow. Can we put down some tape for forced wear or something to, at least in the interim? So, it seems like there's more that we could be doing.
Yeah, yes, we're going to do everything we can. We're overriding, I don't know if the school had a chance, the school staff had a chance to do work, supplies for the teachers in terms of balls and things, so we have coming overnight, every classroom teacher, I believe Kaye, will receive a couple of different soft, software than usual, maybe soccer balls for the area, a couple of basketballs, a couple of smaller foam type balls, so they have some supplies. And we will, we can bring some tape down certainly. And then the PE teachers were doing some planning today to keep, make sure they keep the great new soccer football field available and free, also to allow for space for recess for now, so we let that side go ahead and settle.
So we are going to be using the field areas, absolutely four different grade levels.
Yeah, yeah.
And the striping in that, in that courtyard has been, community council has been an issue in the city, they don't want to put permanent striping down because then they have an event that looks like a schoolyard. We still need to sort that out, but we can certainly do some temporary lines in there for that. That's, that's the one piece that still needs to be worked out with the city.
Other, what else have questions?
Um, it just, it kind of, it just gets in my mind that we are, the day before school starts for these children, the city has been using the facility, but the school won't fully be able to utilize this facility. And being as though we will have K through 12, or pre-K onsite as well, it's just, it's not a comfortable atmosphere for these children to be in. We just took them from, we just took the high school children from an elementary school, and we wanted to have that sense of comfort, that sense of familiarity for them to be comfortable on their campus, and that cannot be established when they still have till the middle of October for their facility to be fully accessible for each individual grade to utilize. These children do not have a play structure yet, you were saying that they cannot step on the grass. It's just, it hurts my heart knowing that if I was in the school system or not, I would not want to come to school tomorrow, at all. It hurts my heart that these kids had to attend orientation and could not see their classrooms. It hurts my heart that this facility that we have trusted you guys with is not finished and will not be finished for a month or so. And it's not even a question, the fact that the facility, it's state of the art, the fact that the facility is a city and schools, but the fact that the city is able to utilize it, but the school will not be able to be utilized by the community and its students for a month or so. So it's just, it's an interesting situation that you've stuck these kids in, and I want you to know that right now. It's an interesting situation that you've stuck these teachers in the faculty with. And it's just, it needs to be known, because you know what? The punchless, that's fine, but it's still stuff that needs to be done that is not done. And it's just, it's a very hard predicament that you put in the city.
I do, I do want to point out one thing, so I think it's important to point out, is that the, there's an entire team of people, and I come to report on behalf of that entire team. And, and that entire team is responsible and accountable also, I'll point that out, okay? I do want to say, I do want to say something, I want to say something. Is that, the, again, we had a, back about a year ago, we had a steel fabrication delay of four months, okay? It was a legitimate delay caused by steel detailing issue complicated with the state architect. 120 days legitimate contractual delay to the project. That would have put us at substantial completion in October, okay? That was a big issue, that was, that was legally, contractionally acceptable to the contractor, to finish in October. And I've given many updates to the board that that had occurred, okay? That's two months from now. That 120-day delay was reduced to about 80 days. And that was the team of people who are on the site here today, working to do that. And we did several things. We met with every subcontractor to negotiate schedule with them. We went to the city to approve Saturday work. And we also, we also negotiated with Turner Construction to reduce that delay down. We would have been looking at not even opening this semester. And that's something that I reported to the board every, for about three or four months, every board meeting that we have that delay. And the team that, I want to just, I want to stand up for the team of people who's here work on the project, that team worked very hard to reduce that four-month delay, which would have been October, back to August, okay? And, you know, the thing is, that kind of, that kind of work, and I've reported on that work at every board meeting when I give my update, for the last about six, eight months, that the team has been doing those things. And those sorts of things, no one ever comments on that, about that. No one ever says, wow, that's great that Turner subcontractors from most of local businesses worked at their cost, off hours to, you know, work harder to make their schedule shorter. That Turner had a contractual right to claim four months longer on the schedule, and they, we negotiated that back to about two months. And that the city council also allowed us to work on Saturdays to pick up time. And when those things, that's, you know, that was, that was a big, that was really difficult to make that happen. And that was a big victory for the private team and for the district, so that we could open for school. And, you know, when that kind of thing happens, it is disappointing to me personally that we don't have anybody in the room who says, wow, that's a great job, we're glad that the team was able to do that. So I just want to point that out.
So, this is a question, you would like us to point out the fact that you have not finished a building, you want us to give Turner, not you, I'm not even going to say you, you would like to give you a group, as you were speaking for, the satisfaction of the doubt that we are congratulating you on finishing the gym?
No, I'm not, I'm not taking congratulations though. I take, I take responsibility for the entire team, no problem to them. What I'm pointing out is, is that it is disappointing to me that, look, we have a lot, we have a bunch of things which aren't complete. We've been signed off for occupancy to start school tomorrow. I mean, that is not, that's not what everyone wants to hear, totally understand that. What I want to point out there is that when we did all that hard work of the last several months to make that four-month delay go to a two-month delay, no one really had any positive things to say to the team, that's unfortunate, that's all I'm saying.
What, do you want a medal?
I don't want a medal, I don't want a medal. I'm just pointing to one of that.
That's ridiculous. That's all right. I know, you can ignore, it's tough, I appreciate. He's coming here taking responsibility.
Sure, I'll take, I'll take responsibility over.
Are there other questions, so we can move this, move this item along?
I have several questions, Mr. Baker. Basically, where do we sit in our attention status with Turner?
We've not received attention yet.
I'm sorry?
We have not received attention yet.
Secondly, I think we spoke in July, that, or even before July, that we had two IRR inspectors, DSA inspectors, one of them come off the site, so we weren't being hot for that.
Yeah, one came off the site, but then it's been back the last couple of weeks to do the inspections.
Okay. Another thing, have all CCDs been approved by DSA?
Yes.
Even with the ones that have just come up recently?
Yes, there's only been a couple recently, those have all been approved, because you can't get signed, you can't get signed up by DSA to have those CCDs.
Okay. Another thing too, when workers come on site, is there a separation as far as they fingerprinted or are they working at hours that are not required to have observation by a supervisor?
So the way it works is, first off, everyone, everyone and entire Turner team, every laborer is from fingerprinted, as well as the rest of us who work on site, we're not employees of the district. Again, the work hours approved are after 3:30 on weekdays, and 3:30 to 8 on weekdays, and 9 to 6 on Saturdays, except for the one after laboring. They have, there has to be, if there's one trade on site, any one trade, there needs to be a foreman. If there are more than one trade, there has to be someone from Turner. That's the contractual requirement.
Another one is that, I was just looking at the site here, or the slide that you have regarding installation of those smart boards or the mark boards. I know, as an architect, I love everything to be lined up aligned perfectly. I noticed at the top, this is a detail issue, but are they per ADA as far as reach height? Because I know DSA is a stifter for the height issue, and any time you see 40 inches, I think that they're mounted too high.
They are adjustable mats, I don't know whether they go lower though, they come out and go like that.
Something that, I don't know.
DSA did sign off on them.
Yeah, but they may have signed off on the installation, but as far as the actual height, I don't know if they had or not.
We'll check in the seat.
Okay. Another thing too, you listed the punchless for all the buildings, but what about the site?
No, that's for the site, the punchless, the punchless have all been issued, there's still a lot of punchless work.
As an architect, I would have walked away and tried to punchless the site. It would have been, they're not done, I'm not going to waste my time.
They did their punch, they did, IRR didn't do a punchless today, just so we had that, so we had that documented. But they, and that, I've not seen that punchless yet.
Okay. And then finally, just going back to the superintendent's making a priority for him as far as the striking is concerned, that is, the priority is for students, and for that to be accessed by the, and used by the city, even if it was previously planned that way, it's just inherent space is a courtyard for use for students. And especially K through five students, and it's just, it just, it just is an environment, the space that needs to be developed as for students, and for city use, that's secondary. So I wanted to make sure that you prioritize that with the city in your conversations.
I will continue to do so.
No other questions, thank you.
Number pass?
First of all, I apologize to people waiting to speak, but I've got a long list here, so bear with me this day, because I want to hear your comments.
Louder, please.
Yeah, so, I do want to talk about final completion. I feel like, you know, echo what member Marion said, you know, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but I just assumed that you were the head of all of this. Is that inaccurate, Mr. Baker? Doesn't everything come back to you for final approval?
Yes, that's correct.
So, I'm not picking on the work or the efforts of the, of the team as you call them, I'm talking about you. You know, you said you talked about these delays, and I'm fairly certain that each and every one of those delays, I said, you've missed every deadline. What makes this one different? And you missed the deadline again, so I'm going to ask you, if you say everything's going to be done by September 1st, what's going to make it different this time? Because you keep missing deadlines.
Okay. First I want to say is that, 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 when a deadline is not made by Turner, because Turner's actually doing the building. We issued notice and notice to them, and, you know, we issued notification, and it's reviewed by district council, so that notice goes to them. Okay, that goes to them.
Right.
In terms of September 1st, we're not, we're not going to make September 1st, which is when the paperwork is in, and, and punchless completion. And the warranty period, the leverage on Turner at that point is the warranty period can't start, does not start until they're done, so they, the two-year warranty period doesn't start, so that just kicks the warranty period out further and further.
So, I guess again, I'll go back to final completion. So Turner comes to you and says, hey, we need until October, and I think it's a perfectly reasonable thing for them to say. And just using the numbers you threw up this evening, that you called that four months away, it is significantly longer than that, because again, we were supposed to be in in May, not July, but let's just call it that four-month delay. What you're saying to us today is that, hey, we didn't do it in four months, we knocked it down to two, but that really is three. it down to two, but that really is three." Is that accurate?
No, so it's a little, I have to talk about the exact dates.
Yeah.
Uh, we did have three weeks of legitimate weather delays, okay? So that, the, the, the contract dates were May first and June first, or actually that was, May for substantial, June for final. So those went out three weeks each due to weather. And then the steel delay, which would have taken those dates and taken that four months beyond that. So that would have been approximately, that would have been approximately, uh, May twentieth and June twentieth, out all the way to September twentieth and October twentieth for substantial and final. So, correctly, can we, we ended up, that one hundred twenty-day delay ended up being about eighty-one days. So the July twenty-fifth date was sixty-nine days and we were about twelve days beyond that.
So, last week at the city schools meeting, and I can't remember getting into minutia here, but I, we sat at the city schools meeting and we talked about final completion. You talked about the sod, and you said, "Oh, that's going in tomorrow, and I think you're going to walk on it right away." So now it's going in, and then tomorrow is the nineteenth, here we are the twenty-fourth. So again, were you misinformed or?
Just didn't know. That was, I was, I was, I'll tell you exactly what happened. That is what we were told by Turner. The next day, the landscape architect issued a change to the sod because they changed their mind and wanted to go over a different sod at the eleventh hour. We ended reversing that decision so we could put the sod in, but that's why the sod was in order. And that was, that was the landscape architect acting on their own, so I want to change the sod. And we rejected the change, but by that time, took us a couple days, that's why the sod was in, that is why it's in today.
Okay, and you also said the play structure would be done? And I see that it's up, but it's not going to be usable for a while. I want to be clear, that's the kindergarten play structure, it's not for the other grades. So the same situation, you said it was going to be going up the next day?
That's what I was told, and it's taken them longer to assemble.
Got it. Because they hadn't even started on Friday, which was the next day.
Correct.
Okay. Um, so also the road and parking lines were going to be going in. Uh, you know, I remember, remember Donnie who asking very specifically about parking. So again, you said, "Oh, yep, that's happening, and I don't see lines, I don't hear lines in the parking lot when you describe it." So again, misled, misinformed, what would happen there?
Again, these are dates that, that the contractor gives me and I report those, okay? When they don't meet those dates, we give them notice and we have got a whole bunch of documentation that they did not make that date. Um, with the part with the striking, as a matter of fact, actually what happened there is we, that was going to be done on Monday, Tuesday, it was going to go today, said, "We don't want you striking and not finishing up. We'll go ahead and have the lots be used so we can stripe on Saturday," because it made more sense functionally to do that. But those are the dates. I will tell you this, Mr. Pat, is that every, every date that I, whenever Turner gives me dates to report to the board, I ask them, "Are you sure?" They say, "Yes, I report that date." So that's, that's, that's the date that they give you. They're the ones who actually control the construction. When they don't meet that date, we document that and let them know that they did not make that date.
And, yeah, I, I, I just see a pattern here. Impressed that you continue to go back and trust Turner, but that's good. I want to talk about the rec area, comes to play area. Again, correct me if I'm wrong, but you presented multiple times to this board that it increases the play space for kids over in the eighties, and there's a lovely image where this play space behind us is highlighted as more square footage. This was the, I mean, this was the drumbeat. I remember, remember Apple making that point very vividly. I remember Mr. Rubio making that point very vividly, and I remember you making that point very vividly. So at what point in time, why are we hearing this at the last minute? Or why am I hearing it? I know I get left out at a lot of your meetings. Why am I just now hearing it that, "Oh, well, we're kind of trying to reclaim it as a rec space"? Were you just wanting to sell us on it as a rec space?
No, that's not.
As a play space or what?
The square footage error, that's, that's actually looking at the actual square footage of the eighty-eights, which is the space. That's just, that's just.
They were looking at the play area space.
Play area space. That's, that's a diagram that the architects put together that shows the difference in sizes.
Yeah, okay.
The, the, that's not, the square footage is not the issue we're talking about. The issue we're talking about earlier is what that, how that space was designed. And the district and many other, the district has felt for the last few months that that space is not designed to support a play area. That it's really, it's not, it doesn't have an open play space, that it didn't have a play structure, because again, the wall hall was added back in May, and that it was, and that it was not functional as a play space. So the function of the space has now been changed so it can function more as a play space. And that's been, that's, the city has kind of begrudgingly gone along with that. But that's on top, that, what I'm talking about is the actual design elements, not the actual area square footage. That remains the same.
Yes. It, it really does matter what the design purpose is, but we'll move on because I've got a long list here. Uh, you mentioned the fencing around, that we're totally fenced in. I think you used a lovely phrase that, uh, site safety is our number priority. Nothing is more important is what you said. I disagree with that. I think our kids are more important than site safety, but, uh, and on that note, with the fencing being wrapped and it being chain link, do we have emergency exits that kids can get out of during the day that aren't just at the entry points, but when they're on fields and things like that?
Yes, all of the code compliant exit gates are in place and have been reviewed by the DSA inspectors and have been approved. We have, all those exits are in place.
That wasn't the question I asked. With the chain link fencing in place, DSA signed off on, "Okay, there's chain link fences here, there's a gate for kids to get out if there's a..."
Yeah, all, all the gates are installed at those fences.
All right. Uh, parking on the road here, is, are going to be equipment parked there?
No.
Tomorrow, and I saw a lot of, uh, bags of stone, I think they were.
All the, all the equipment, all, every turn of the new record, all the equipment, all tools, all vehicles, everything are out of here. There are some, there are some bags of landscape material that we request to be in places which are not, which are not taken up, taken to parking spaces. They're still working on that right now.
Because member Donnie was very clear about the wanting parking there with people coming in tomorrow, so. Um, and can you explain the trip fix? And why didn't we, if we knew it was a trip hazard, why didn't we label it as such? So two things, what's the fix and why was it?
The, the, so, the issue there is that, that we pointed out that we were concerned about it. The architects, the architects were adamant that it would be fine, and the inspector said it would be fine. Um, we said, "You got to go with them." I wanted to be direct and to look at a solution that would eliminate that, that step. Um, and, um, but it had been signed off for occupancy by the inspectors. I just want to point out that we pointed out this as we could. I agree that should we have, should we have considered putting in a barricade there? Probably, however, yeah, it is, there's a stripe on the top of it actually.
It has to be developed.
No, the stripe, the stripe is, the stripe is a code requirement for a stripe at the edge of the road, the stuff, not as the...
No, there's a piece of blue painter's tape there.
There should, there's a dark thing, oh, anyway.
There's a piece of blue painter's tape there. Have, have a little mark. Oh, so what's the fix?
The fix is actually to cut the concrete out there and ramp up a code compliant, it will be just a more slope sidewalk, compliant with ADA, no railings required to eliminate that step.
Um, okay, so you talked about being able to take occupancy, and I know it was a late date, we rushed to a box, but I was walking around the classrooms, teachers brought me in, and one of the first things I noticed is nobody had swept the floors of construction debris and dust, so prior to moving and prior to occupancy, as you called, wouldn't that have been something that we should have requested from Turner to go and clean the floors?
They did, they did, they did a final clean that was part of the punch list that had been done before then. Um, I'm not sure the exact area you're talking about.
Classrooms.
Uh, yeah, I, I, the exact area of dust, I'm not sure where that was, because we walked when they were cleaned before we did the furniture end. The, uh, all I can say is right now we've got the janitorial staff cleaning classrooms also, and Turner did another clean of the corridors today.
Who's going to be overseeing to make sure that we work around student activities? Because we're going to have students on campus after school, and I know, um, I just don't have a lot of faith in the people who've been overseeing this so far. So I want to make sure that we have somebody who's in charge just sort of before Turner leaves or comes on.
Right. What we, every, every day at three thirty, we'll, we'll, we'll plan beforehand with the city and district to make sure we understand what the, what the uses are. And then every day at three thirty, um, Swinerton and Turner will meet with the city and the district and go over what those uses are to make sure we stay out of these areas till it's closed for a time. Probably on a daily basis, we'll meet and understand what that schedule is going to be to make sure that we're not working, not impacting any after-school uses.
Can you explain the purpose of the one-way windows and parents' spaces upstairs of this building?
Uh, I cannot, but I would have to defer to DSK for that.
Yeah, please, I'm curious why we have one-way windows.
I, I don't know, I was going to say the same thing, but I was figuring we'd have to ask the architects. I, I was involved in design over the years with community and partnership, so I don't know what they're going to do. Maybe I'm a little bit greedy, follow me, something, I'm not sure.
It seems like we have an inordinate amount of design errors, omissions. Is there recourse to that?
Quick question, there are, there are, uh, there are some sections in agreement. I'm not familiar with this, with this agreement, which was executed before we came on boards, it's a little bit different than other agreements, but as I said, it does have more ability to be sourced than most, most partnerships have. To answer your question specifically, it talks about negligence, which is not commonly used in architecture agreements, it's more of a legal term. Um, so we have to go through a process of determining that. Uh, there is some recourse for, for, for what's called negligent as opposed to, um, this kind of standard coordination of completing drawings. And so that, we have to discuss with district council on that issue, which way we have done, Dr. Rubio and I have had an initial discussion about that, we need to do that a bit more because especially with, especially with, in the most recent months, there have been a lot more of that stuff than we had earlier, particularly site. There have been more, we had much, much less of this with the issues, we were going to build this proper, but the site has been an issue. And as we've installed that site, we're going to lose things to come around.
Um, this was from, who would be, uh, "Why aren't we open either, we didn't order them at the beginning of the summer?"
Member Pat, um, I am doing everything I can to try to support the schools, support the teachers, support the principals. Uh, it was unclear to me if that equipment was being ordered or not, so I went ahead and did that, and I guarded the principals today. They may have, maybe the teachers have equipped the flasher. Um, I'm, I'm just taking actions in any area I can where I think we're going to have them necessary.
All right. Um, yeah, I want to hear from the teachers, I'm curious, and I'm, I'm very concerned that we're not going to be open tomorrow. I don't know that I feel safe, I don't know that, I want to, I want to follow what Brittany said, I would not send my child here tomorrow. Um, and that's a challenge for me, and I would ask that the people do the same, so I think I'm done. Mr. Apple, floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, a public comment on the site.
Cool. I appreciate the time to make a comment. My name's Tom Salvatore, I'm a music teacher. Uh, I was also last year's, um, teacher of the year. Um, and I want to make quick comments about, um, the room. First I want to say everybody, especially the teachers, have been working really hard. I have been impressed by the, um, people doing work here on the, on the staff. Um, there are some problems with the, I see for our students with the room. Um, the first thing is there's no sink currently in the music room. A sink is not a wish list item, it's a complete necessity. Students need to be able to clean their instruments, their spit valves, where spit falls on the ground. And I need students to be able to clean their instruments in the time we're there. And if a student needs to clean their instrument now, they need to go out to the bathroom to clean it, where other things happen in the bathroom, we can't monitor that, they're missing class time. And I, you know, other things happen in the bathroom, they're picking something off and they can lose a piece of their instrument because I'm not there. So for the, so for sanitary reasons, for instructional reasons, for the student's good, it's not a wish list necessity. I understand that, like, one can't just pop up, and I understand they'll have to wait some time, and I'm okay with that. But I guess I, I just want to say I'm here just to say that we all know that February doesn't roll by and we're like, "Oh, this thing didn't happen, no one told me." So this thing is an absolute necessity. The other thing is, I feel like the architects never talk to me about where, which way the room should face. If, please, um, when you get a chance, take a step, step behind the curtains, um, and you will see that there's a wall with a clock on it. That is without a doubt the beginning of the room, the, the front room. Every, um, teacher that I've walked in and showed us would say, agree with me, that's the front of the room. The white boards and our new technology smart boards were plugged on the sides of the room, so if I set us up to, in the front of the room, all the students would not have access to be able to see the Prometheus board. So I, when I communicated this to Simone and to Elizabeth, they said, "Well, that's where it's going to stay." And the message that I, the way I took it as a teacher, was that it's okay to, for, it's okay that not all the students have access to it. And that, that's the way it's been communicated to me so far. And when you go in, you'll see that, I had communication with people since, since last week about the whiteboard issue, and you'll see that there's no whiteboards in the front of the room. The other thing is that front of the room, I measured from one outlet to the, to the other, and there's over sixty feet of wall space without an outlet, and this is very problematic since I have electronic instruments that need to be plugged in. I'm hoping to have a, at this school piano lab where I can plug in, um, in pianos easily, but when there's over sixty feet of wall space without plugs, that will make it very difficult imagining locking the stitching cords, and that being very problematic. Um, the last, uh, I'm really glad that, I, I don't hear anything, but I'm really glad you gave clarification about the partition. The way I understand it, the partition won't be built, installed until after three thirty, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Because I had a nightmare of like, students in here while partition construction is going up, um, and...
Out of time.
Okay. I really appreciate the time, thank you.
What's the nearest high school bathroom for the music room?
Is there a question that needs me answering?
Yeah, what? Okay, okay, is that good?
Yes.
Um, there are restrooms right through that door right there.
Those are high school restrooms?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Camille Paris, I'm a second grade teacher, and it isn't obvious, I'm the person who go for... Thank you very much for addressing the issue in the front of the Gate Eight building. It is definitely a hazard. I didn't, and, and just to clarify where I actually did trip, there is a one and a half inch step that gradually gets bigger, and I, um, was told that they were planning on putting a ramp on the area where I actually walked, not anticipating it to, to, to be more like a four-inch step. Um, and so that's where I, and there is absolutely no, there was nothing there to, to suggest that this was a step that I needed to be careful of. And the, the tape that's on there, now I was told Marsha Farhan put down after I tripped so that people would be more aware of the, the step down. But thank you for fixing that. Obviously, if I can do it, I'm, I'm not an accident-prone person, anybody can do it. And we have small children supposedly coming to school tomorrow, which is absolutely unbelievable to me. Um, this school is a construction site, we do not have curri, we can totally have curriculum, but no one knows where it is. I asked for pencils and crayons today, and I was told that nobody knows where they are. Um, you know, we're all making do and we're all ready to start the day tomorrow with, with students or without students, but I'm urging you to consider doing a robo-call and canceling at least until Monday so that you can make this campus more safe for students.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Johnson, I teach fourth grade, I've been teaching in Emoryville for nine years, and, uh, I've never experienced anything like this. We are not ready to open, we don't have our curriculum, we don't know as teachers where these access, these emergency access points are, uh, to the gates. We haven't received a tour, we didn't, I just canceled today, just for the record. I would also like you to know that we just got in here on Thursday. I'm pregnant, I've been working for like twelve hours, eight hours a day since Thursday, coming in, trying to get my classroom together, and Elizabeth said, she told us at the meeting to get my classroom together, and Elizabeth said, she told us in a meeting at Annie Yates, that we would all have help unpacking, that they would have people helping us unpack. I had to beg for help, and the moments that I received help, it wasn't that substantial. And so I just, and I'm still not ready. I don't even have my textbooks, so I can't say that I've even planned my first day. Our classrooms are not ready, I think it's very convenient that the classrooms that were shown, we didn't take pictures of all of the classrooms, so that you can have a real picture of what's going on behind these doors. In addition to that, you know, we have wires hanging out of the, there's supposed to be a ceiling fan, so that we could add ventilation, there's no ventilation, I'm trying to talk fast. You pointed out that it was clean, the classrooms are clean. I was in, I was sick when I left after the first day, literally sick, I can't afford to be sick. And there was white soot all over our walls, the floor had some sort of, I don't know what this stuff was, but it was like piles of, like sawdust or something, that I went out and bought a broom and a mop, you could walk in my classroom, and if you want to volunteer, I'd love it, or any of the Turner people, come on and clean it, because I had to do that. And that was while my things were, I was told to unpack and get my classroom prepared. So anyhow, with that said, as a teacher, I can't say that I can't meet my deadline, oh, I didn't meet my deadline. If school starts tomorrow, our children aren't ready, and, but I have a deadline that I have to meet, so I'm gonna be here till whenever I get kicked out tonight, and I stay here because you all need to know, we are not ready. Some of you have children that go to this school, I wouldn't bring my child to this school tomorrow. It's not safe, we have teachers being hurt, it's not okay. There's equipment around here, things, it's just not ready, it's not okay. I have a ton of other things I want to say, but I'm sure I'm, am I out of time?
We have forty-five seconds.
Oh, I have forty-five seconds, I'm just talking fast, okay, so let me keep going. Oh, no storage, no play, no areas to play, no bathroom access. We were talking in a meeting today, we don't know where our children are gonna go to the bathroom, because they're going to be out on this football field, and apparently maybe use the gym, use the bathroom inside of the gym, where high school students may be, we don't know, and we were told that our little ones are not gonna be interacting with the high school, and so we're all confused about that, there is a mention of porta-potties possibly being out there. So we don't know what's going on, even when there is, when this area opens up, if it opens up, we were told, we sat down in meetings at Annie Yates for years, talking about what, and they were little meetings that I think were really just facades, because clearly this isn't meant to be a play area. If it was, we wouldn't have this debate right now with the city and the school. So anyhow, we were asked as teachers what we needed, and I don't believe we were heard. We don't have storage in our classrooms, not enough, we had to give up storage, so thank you for listening.
My name is Mary Ann Coach, I will be teaching first grade this year, and I started my teaching career here at Annie Yates as a student teacher, and I've been going with my time here. I have been trying really hard to stay balanced and see things as the cup, the glass sample, but this morning, we were given the Williams Act to post up in our classrooms, and just infuriating, I don't have curriculum, I don't have my laptop, I'm not ready, and the first days of school are so important, and I feel like we're being so propitious. Teachers are, are being asked to do yard duty the first several days, someone said the first two weeks, so I will be going from eight-thirty until lunchtime with no bathroom break. I don't know where bathrooms will be for my kids, and then on top of that, after lunch, I go from eleven-fifty to three PM with no break, with my students for over three hours. I just, I think if we start school tomorrow, you are setting us up for failure.
I'm from Miles TK. I agree with most of what was said. It feels like so unfinished. I have the smallest of our kids, I am the TK teacher, so I think I have one of the biggest concerns about tomorrow, and what's gonna happen with our kids, and the bathroom situations. More of the idea of feeling safe, we don't know where everything is. If something was to happen on this campus tomorrow, we don't know the exits, we don't know where to go, we don't have an emergency plan, it just doesn't feel safe. Everything that Ms. Perez fell, she wasn't the only one that fell off of that spot. I fell, other people fell off the spot. There's other things that we don't even know, like she said, the wires are hanging from the ceiling in my room, there's containers of things open, like some kind of little grip thing. I'm grateful, I want to say that, I am grateful. I think this school site is beautiful, I love my classroom, I put in, you've given us thirteen hours of pay, but I think every teacher at this school site has been here since you allowed us to come on campus. Some of us have left here anywhere from eight to nine o'clock at night. But I think we got in on Wednesday, and Wednesday I was here up to six-thirty, the next night I was there until seven-thirty. All of us are doing that, and we're not asking for anything additional, but we're asking to be respected. We came back into our classrooms before we even had an opportunity to come into our own classrooms. We, I felt totally disrespected, and I've said it to the people, to the rest of people, is that you come in before we even get in our classrooms, and you take one of our largest storage closets, and this is supposed to be our classroom, and we don't even have enough space to put our things away. My puppet area is, is full of boxes that I've just shoved up against the wall and covered up because I have nowhere to put things. And yet we're having to give up another space, a closet space. We all talked about it as a staff, and we said, if they're in there on a port, what do you call it, they're there in the afternoons, why can't they have portable carts that they're pushing to take from point A to point B for what they need? That is our classroom, but we're not being respected in the sense that our need to be honored, and now we hear that we're an afterthought as far as what's provided for our students on the playground. That's just not right, it doesn't feel warm and fuzzy, it doesn't feel respected. And I know that I give a hundred percent, and I know that every member of my staff as a whole give a hundred and fifty percent each and every day, and that's all we ask them to do is to be respected, and we want our children to feel safe, and we want to be safe, and that doesn't feel like what's happening right now.
Hi, I'm Malcolm Wong, I'm one of the K teachers, and I agree with quite a lot that's been said, but my main concern is the safety of the kids. We have two PD days, and in the middle of the first PD day, professional development day, when the administrators were taking questions from us, I just had an image of what was gonna happen on the first day, and I thought somebody's gonna get hurt. Because, because the courtyard, the play area, is not gonna be available, we're all gonna be out on the field taking turns. A lot has happened very quickly, but there's still too many hazards out there, there's gonna be a lot of kids, they're gonna be excited, it's gonna be very difficult to prevent the determined, excited kids to go explore, dash off, when we have so many new teachers, and we don't, it's gonna be hard to control them going. I've taken, I don't know, when it was still light, I just took a circuit around the field, hadn't been back there yet, there's a lot I haven't seen. But on the far left-hand side, there's a long, narrow alley with things piled up there. At the very end, there's a fence bolted, but there's a gap enough so that a determined kid, they want to, they could go out and nobody will know. Along that avenue, there's benches that are pretty heavy, piled up, pretty easy, I gave one little tug, it could topple, somebody could get pinned. Along the back edge, there's a lot of scraps, wood, of wood, junk, chunks of wood, chunks of sharp metal. I took, I picked up one can of solvent, it still had a couple of lot of solvent, and it's a lot of dangerous stuff back there. Along this other edge, there's a big wide strip, I don't know what it is, but I see what it's like, I put my hand on it and got sticky, like tar, sticky stuff, it's hard to wash off. If that's not fully set or gelled by tomorrow morning, unless it's fully barricaded off, there's gonna be kids running on that, and then they're gonna be running everywhere else in no time, and that's gonna mean going back and reworking a lot of stuff. They're gonna go right onto the field and that stuff, whatever it is, it's gonna cost a lot of money to fix all that, not necessarily a safety issue, but I'm really concerned, there's gonna be kids all over the place, and you could have a bunch of accidents. So that's my concern here, again, I agree with Audrey, putting the teachers in an impossible position to keep the kids safe. So I also suggest, even though it's this late, I'm a little bit frustrated having to wait this long to say, I wish we had been able to say our say earlier, but I also think, put out a robo-call, you're gonna have a lot of pissed-off parents, but at least you won't have any accidents. I also went back and forth in my mind a little bit about mentioning this, but in my credential year, I went to Mills in two thousand, two thousand two, two thousand three, and I heard about it because I was a student teacher at Mills. And that year, the first day of school, the first day on the job, Anna Cretta Allen, the principal, she had a child run over and killed, first day of school, I'm sure you guys all know that. We don't want, we don't need anything like that. There's the other issues about furniture and stuff, but the safety, if those kids come tomorrow, we'd be really lucky to get through the day without somebody getting hurt.
Good evening, I'm Alvin Burns, computer technology teacher, this will be my seventh year here at Emory, I love Emory. I'm just really tired, it's been a long day, but if you saw me today, and I'm sure a lot of my staff members and coworkers have saw me, rolling on the floor, doing a lot of things to reconfigure the computer lab. The computer lab's been used for a couple of days of training, but it was not put back the way that I actually arranged it for my teaching, so I'm definitely not ready. I mean, I should be at home right now, working on my syllabus more and my first-day activities for the students, but it's gonna be very difficult. So I want to do what's already been said, I agree with my staff members, I agree with my fellow teachers, it's just not, I'm not ready, and I know the students are not ready to come into this environment. So I believe it's gonna be very safe, I believe it's not gonna be a lot of learning going on, it's just gonna be a lot of chaos, right? So I just wanted to say my piece, thank you.
I'm Diane Mack, I have two boys in the school, gonna be third and a third, I also happen to be the PTO president, but I'm here as a parent. I'm sad to see you know the parents here, because I'm, I'm, I'm behind the school, I've been here a lot of, I'm sorry, there's, we're here. I've been here a lot of volunteer hours, and I will continue to be here a lot of volunteer hours, I will continue to advocate for all of the other parents to do the same, and anything that the teachers need, I'm gonna do my best to get some people and, you know, do what we can. But there's only so much that the volunteers can do, there's only so much that the parents can do, as, I implore you to delay this, this is, I'm going back and forth, I'm not sure what I'm gonna do with my kids tomorrow. I love the school, and everyone in it, and I understand the bigger picture, I see all of that too. But the, the safety of the kids and the issue of the readiness of the teachers, and it's become an emotional issue, and I, I really, you, you as a board, need to understand it and see it, and put that effort into being behind the people and being behind the students. And also, on a different note, I'd like to see more of a fight between the school and the city. Yes, this is a joint effort, but this should be a school first, before it's for public use. I've been in Emoryville a long time, twelve, thirteen years, my husband longer, and I've seen this from the beginning, and while I, I love the changes, I love the building and the site, there, there is just so many of the things that we're, the city is not remembering that this is, our kids come first, we're the future, and pushing our school to start tomorrow is not putting our students first, it's not putting our educators first, and the school board and the city and all the powers that be need to think about that and make that a priority. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, Dawn Turner, teacher librarian. First, I want to acknowledge our work together, and thank you for acknowledging my part in our work together. It has been a good ride for five years. We don't always agree on things, but that is part of the process, and I appreciate the work that you do as well. You know, I'm going to, of course, echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I have never been in a situation where you have an active construction site, and you plan on bringing children. I watched on the news that Burlingame opened their first school in fifty years, and those grounds look pristine, and we want that for our students. We don't want anything less for our students. No, the teachers aren't ready, how can, we did not have equal access to our classrooms. Some people's classrooms were used as staging areas, and so they couldn't get their classrooms together. People tried to get in at all day, all hours of the day, and because of, you know, different usages, they couldn't get into their classroom. So sometimes there was painting issues with the steps, there are all kinds of issues. But what I want to point out is, I met with Dr. Rubio every month, and I brought up concerns every single month, and I said to him, I don't know a construction job that ends on time, I don't know of one, they all fall behind, and do we have a plan B? I kept asking that, do we have a plan B? I don't understand the rush to open tomorrow, when we could have pushed this back until after Labor Day. Certainly you guys knew by July fifteenth that there was still substantial work to be done. And so I feel like there's plenty of blame to go around, but that we are always bearing the brunt of the problem. It always falls back on students and teachers. And so something needs to be done to prevent students from entering this site tomorrow, and the possible problems that could-
Hi, Mark Davis, again. You just heard from, and I'm not even gonna use the word teacher, these are professionals, and I hear all the tight lip service to how we respect our teachers as professionals, and they're giving you a professional opinion. Their business is children, their business is education. Listen to them, they know what they're talking about. They don't come up here every year and go, hey, we postponed school because I really gotta, you know, day at the beach tomorrow. This is not about that. I don't have, people just don't have the materials to conduct a class, so my question is, what is your expectation? I don't want to hear everybody patting themselves on the back, because we went in and we managed some classes that we basically BS that way through, because we don't have the materials to conduct the class as we would. So it's, it's, it's a joke, and we're begging you to please listen and consider, what is there to lose? We have a lot to gain. We have a lot, this is a fabulous facility, and also saying this, just- We have a lot, this is a fabulous facility, and also saying this, just let's make it safe, polish it up, and then let it roll. I don't think anybody would question that, it's a great facility. But tomorrow, it's eight thirty, I still don't have books in my room, and those books have to be numbered because of the Williams Act, gotta do it all by hand for econ, government, world history, US history. And I got kids coming tomorrow. Help us.
One more public comment?
Yes, I did, I don't like that phone. I shouldn't have talked to you. I would like to encourage the board and invite the board to actually walk through the school, and I would give you to see what the state of the school is like. But I really, I don't want us to talk about it, I would like us to be about it, and I would like some action to take place, so actually, I'm inviting you to really go walk through the school and look at it. Just walk through, and look at every classroom, not just the stage room, but really look at every room, and assess it and say, "Can I really honestly see children walking in this building and navigating themselves throughout this building?" When I make mention of the field, I mean, the facility is gorgeous, facility, that word to me sounds like an institution. It's very colorful back here. If we are expecting our young children to play out here, I know the city that we have this agreement, and I believe in ECL, like, I believe in CHAM, I really believe in that, but if our students are gonna play here, whoop on the weekdays, and the city wants it open for the weekend, if we're not encouraging a prison yard here, where kids play on concrete and it's gray, and it's enclosed, and they don't, I mean, there's bars and there's beams and there's mesh, and that's great, but there's no color. And there's impermanence with the, the equipment that they're gonna use, and I'm not saying this to be critical, I'm just saying, we have to be aware of what we're putting in our children's heads. We want them to have fun and to play. I'm a grandfather, I wouldn't let my grandchildren play on concrete and there's no color, I wouldn't do it. So this color back here is, is amazing, one of the parents said to me, "Mr. Rogers, we can see that you guys go this far to high school." It's beautiful for high, I know the big kids are gonna love all of this, but all you have is gray on that yard. So I really wanna encourage, encourage the board again to take a tour and look around, but we really need to get with the city on this played area for our children, we're talking about TK two, not four. Four. Playing on concrete, there's an issue with that, enough, but no color, because we want skateboarders to come in here on the weekend and skateboard. And I know we shared with martial arts class, that's the only people that we've seen using the NIH facility, and we need to come up with a name so we don't say facility anymore. Is this a school? Or just building instructors? Because facility is very institutional sounding. So if we are sharing our school with the city, we, and again, this isn't to be critical, but this is just to say, we need some color out here and we need to make this suitable for children. And the skateboarders can skate on color, because I know we're gonna have all kinds of amazing concerts in the space right with the stage, but we need to get some color out there, but please take a tour, thank you.
Okay, so I heard Mr. Baker from Swinerton talk about something that's not done yet and gotta be fixed, and I came up with what, I mean, there's a lot of things that came under that category, but he said that it would be done, I quoted him, I wrote it down, it would be fixed, quote, "at our cost," meaning that the district won't have to pay, I presume. But that's sort of like, that statement, that's sort of like a giveaway, "our cost." Whose cost is he talking about, Swinerton's or Turner's? I think he's talking about Turner, because Swinerton's not gonna pay for fixing something, but the fact that he's interchangeably talking about Swinerton and Turner, sort of, you know, shows, sort of let the cat out of the bag with that statement, it's like, Swinerton doesn't work for the district. Swinerton and Mr. Baker were paying over a million dollars for his services, but what he really is doing is working for Turner. I mean, we have seen this for the last, you know, two years. So we paid a million, you know, over a million bucks, and what we got is an apology for Turner. And, you know, as the one, the person that's gonna pay, the end, ending up paying the million, I, it's pretty, I'm kind of incensed, I think we shouldn't, should not have hired Swinerton, we should've hired somebody who's actually gonna represent our interests. I walked around the, never mind the safety issues, I've walked around the facility here, sorry to use the term, looking at the fit and finish, I'm in the business, and it's really bad, it looks like a rush job, looking at the welds, they're horribly done, the weld grinds are really bad, and, you know, this puts the last fifty years, and so like the last two months, everything just gets really rushed, and it's, the fit and finish is, you know, very bad. And so, you know, we didn't pay for bad fit and finish, we paid for good, good quality work and we're not sitting here, sitting here. But never mind all that, what I really wanna talk about is, you know, respect your teachers. I hope you listen to them here, I mean, that would be sort of a new paradigm, were you to do that. You know, they're, what they're telling you is that it's, the site is not safe for children here, in their professional opinion, and I think you should honor that, and I, I don't think it is safe for children, I wouldn't put my, my child here tomorrow. I think clearly you're gonna, you're gonna have to delay the opening. Now, one thing that we hear from Mr., I heard from Mr. Rubio, Mr. Affeld before him, you know, Mr. Simon, a lot, all the time, when we come up here and I, the parents would take issue with the board policy, we would get lectured, very commonly, still do, about how, what you do is in the best interest of the children. So, you know, that's really irritating, it's really irritating, because what you're implying is what, what we're suggesting is not in the best interest of the children, and you should operate in the best interests of the children tomorrow and delay the opening of this facility, sorry for the term.
Superintendent, I had a couple of questions for you. We, I heard, I heard a number of comments, books, curriculum, materials, can you respond to that? It doesn't concern me.
Yes.
You're starting school and you have, you know, materials.
The materials, as the audience clearly explained earlier as well, are noted, many of the materials, in particular, the one that comes to mind is the math curriculum, was copied multiple times for us by Office Depot, and those are in many boxes, and so those materials are here on the site, but they are not currently organized, so we need to get those organized, get those after the teachers' right away. So we have that curriculum, but we need to get it into fashion immediately, so we're working on that very well.
When is that, is it gonna happen, by tomorrow morning?
No, realistically, I don't think we will be able to get it started until before the end of the day tomorrow.
So that's math, they won't have...
That's primarily, that's primarily the math copies of math, that's right, they have, they have, I suspect they have their, some of the materials from martial arts, the teacher materials, so they have it.
No.
Okay, so, and I'm not worried we have it, you know. Mr. Member Pax, if you're gonna do that, you're gonna sit next to me and be unprofessional and disrespectful, it's not gonna be helpful for our country.
I'm sorry, gross incompetence shocks me. If you don't know the materials the teachers have, don't be surprised that I respond.
Okay.
But if you're gonna call me grossly incompetent, it's gonna be... If I can just interrupt...
It is a problem.
Let's have a public meeting, and I have the floor, I'm asking some questions, if I can just, posing you to, to respect and appreciate. The, the issue of the city, sort of coming in and taking certain covers, I mean, I think we're duty to share space, but we can figure out our shared space, and so I guess, you know, my response on that is, you know, they can't have most of the space, or the first choice of space, we have to figure that out, and, and, some of its cars, I don't know, its dad, is there something to be worked out, and I'd like, I'd like it worked out.
We, we are, we are working through it, the city has always, as part of the plan with the district, it's always been that all the cabinets belong, they're, they're in every room, just the backs of one or two rooms, I believe, there are two large tall cabinets, the city has always asked to have one of those, and it's always been part of the agreement with the district, all the lower cabinets belong to the teachers, we do, we are procuring additional cabinets, re-shelving for all the classrooms, because it is quite clear from the teachers' feedback that we need more shelving, so I've communicated to the teachers that we're giving the shelving as quick as we can do.
Can I interject really quickly? President Affeld, I feel like given the late hour, the pressing issue right now is not cabinet space, but is opening tomorrow.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry you are here. Why am I talking about this? Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
I, I will ask you to leave, let's have a civil conversation.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And I'm asking a question for that, yes, that is on my list of things to get to.
You don't think it's prudent?
I'm sorry, Mr. Pax.
Yeah.
I'm speaking, and I have the floor, I'm asking you.
Let him speak, you asked me a question.
Yeah, I just worry about getting ahold of parents. You know, no, you don't, but that's okay.
I'm, no, because I'm asking...
They're talking about doing a robo-call, it's nine o'clock.
This board does not have the authority or ability to take an action on this item. This is an information item, and it's not been known elsewhere.
I'm sorry.
You, if I can, no.
Point of procedure.
I'm talking to the superintendent.
I'm sorry, I'm making it a point. We have emergency, we can take an emergency action.
The superintendent can make, can take administrative action.
And we can direct him to do so for the sake of recess, so he has time to call parents.
I'm asking the superintendent, based on what you heard tonight, what is your opinion as to whether or not the school is in a safe condition, and whether or not the teachers are gonna be ready tomorrow, and whether, whether or not we should be open?
I can respond to that. I wanna appreciate first, this is my response, that teachers have a lot of anxiety about starting school tomorrow, I think that, and everyone's, the people in the audience talked about, and they said very accurately, their opinion was that they didn't feel like the school was ready, or that they were ready. I know many of the teachers have walked up to me and said they are ready and they're excited, they're happy to be here, we have another sixty employees who aren't in the room with us right now, and we have about seventy to eighty new students who are new enrollees, not kindergarten, we're gonna probably break some of our enrollment records, so, and I will tell you the answer to your question, I believe we are ready, as, as ready as we can be with the circumstances, and I think we'll be able to operate and function effectively, and I would go further to say that we all take this responsibility to our parents and families and the violations that we, which requires for today's notice to do otherwise. So, in my opinion, as superintendent, I would say, yes, we are as ready as we can be under the circumstances, and I think all of our teachers are doing their best, they're all working hard, we've all been working hard, and, you know, many times, I think, this is an issue of mindset regarding dealing with this particular situation, if there was anything I believe was going to be unsafe to students, for any of our students coming tomorrow, our parents, our families, our teachers, I would say otherwise right now. Did you hear what the teachers said? This is about your embarrassment, so, because you don't wanna be embarrassed. Mr. Donaghy, I'm fine being embarrassed, I'm okay with it, but right now, I've been asked my professional opinion, and there are many opinions that should be respected, there are many opinions in the room, and there are many teachers who aren't here with us right now, who are probably in their classrooms now, still preparing, and so I would, but I'm telling the board, I've been asked a question, my response is that we are planning for tomorrow, and we have EPB coming to help with the intersections, we have Prossinger, we have all of our staff out in position, and we're looking forward to seeing all our parents and students.
For the children. So let me, let me pass it on to the board, if they want to...
I would, especially as a former student, which I title none of you hold, it's just, it's embarrassing, sitting here and trying to take a leadership position for a community that may be the individual that I am today, and to see that these kids will step foot on a school building that is not a school because it does not have curriculum to give them the proper teaching that they deserve. As a community member, as a former student, as a fortressee, I feel as though we should take the right of call of duty to go about and make sure that these kids come tomorrow to get the proper orientation that they did not have when they came to this facility, to these grounds on Monday and Tuesday. The teachers have not had the proper orientation that they needed with their curriculum, so therefore, we can allow these individuals, these families to come tomorrow, under the rules that this will be an orientation that they were neglected to have prior to them starting their first day of classes. As a former student, if I would've seen this facility, if I had stepped foot on this facility, I would've been like, "Mom, take me home right now, take me home, get me out of here," knowing that I live down the street and I pass this place every single day, and I've had conversations with Mr. Baker, I've had conversations with each of us, and it's just, it's, I'm appalled, I'm at a loss for words, my emotions are balled up, to see that my, my friends, my family, my community members will have to be placed in this predicament, it breaks my heart, because we are talking about having Barbara Lee and everybody coming next week, that's not the issue. The issue is that we have to make sure that these kids, these kids are coming into a classroom that has no curriculum. How is it that the school day is supposed to go on with no curriculum? The younger kids have no playground, what kids do you know that needs no playground? Joy just had to take her son to walk around, is that what the teachers have to do tomorrow there to walk around with kids? We have no type of sense of family right now, and that breaks my heart, to know that I stood up here for a leadership position and now I just sit up here and we are embarrassed. What, should we, can we point fingers, should we keep on going at this little rat game that we keep on playing? We sit up here and we say that we're political and we're, we have all these high standards and we're acting like this is just a mockery. People wanna sit up here and have arguments like this is the thing to do right now? This is about the kids, this is not about conversations that you guys might have on public TV, this is not about what you guys feel is always safe, because it's not. And to know that these kids and these families will come to this facility tomorrow and probably undisenroll and take their children out, to know that teachers just left out of the room for a conversation that they just gave their time and energy to when they could've been working on their classes with no curriculum. It's heartbreaking, and I cannot express it anymore than to say that we need to actually allow these kids to have the orientation that they deserve, to get to know the school that they have waited on for years. I've had this image, I've had this, this design in my brain, and it's been all kinds of discussions, since I've been in like the eighth grade, I've been in eighth grade, I graduated high school, I graduated college, and this is still not done. And I'm highly called, and I feel as though it's just being right to the side as though, oh, it's okay, the kids can come tomorrow. If you allow these kids to come, what if these teachers strike tomorrow? Do you have a plan B? That's all I have to say.
Member, for your counterpoint, I can just point a clarification, is it your suggestion that tomorrow be an orientation day?
Yes, yes, that is clearly not...
Instead of instructional day?
Yes, you cannot have an instructional day with no instructions.
Then parents bring their childrens tomorrow, that it'd be an orientation?
Because nobody has had a walk, a proper walk-in, these teachers do not know where things are, the kids do not know where things are, so who's gonna direct them? It's the blind leading the blind right now.
Thank you for that question. Have a further conversation, member?
Completely emotional, like first...
Can't hear, tip your microphone out.
Sorry, I'm trying not to cry.
Sorry, I'm trying not to cry. Um, I'd like to first comment on the behavior of the, of the adults that are sitting at this table. Please let me remind you that we are all here for supposedly the same purpose and to work together to do what's best with the children of our community. So please stop speaking to each other that way. Secondly, when it comes to school tomorrow, I do not feel that this facility is safe for the kids to walk on campus tomorrow. Although I'm highly concerned about telling parents at nine o'clock at night, they cannot bring their kids to school and they have to scramble for last-minute childcare. I'm going to have to agree with the parents or the teachers, it's not, it's not ready and I think we should delay until Monday.
So, again, this was asked if there were any, uh, we can take action. We clearly have an emergency situation. Any good attorney would tell you that yourself, that maybe generally, when people are stoked, professionals come on and say it's unsafe. And so, we have a safety emergency. Board policy thirty-five, sixteen point five. Authorized superintendent to close the school site, change the revenue to thirty-one. Are we taking any necessary action? So, I would motion, in this emergency situation, we direct the superintendent to take that action. And I am looking for a second to say we close the school until at least Monday. So, I'm taking, I'm making it an emergency. Resolution, I'm looking for a second.
I, I understand, and I'm going to say, I'm, I'm, that's it. Uh, number five.
Second.
I'll second, it's no problem.
I was already discussing that, but, um, let's remember pass, uh, to the board. Uh, there is no safety emergency that I'm aware of. We've passed every inspection, we've, every elevator certified. There is nothing that I am aware of that is going to be, that, that the safety part of our schools. We have, uh, our teachers are ready, uh, well, some of our teachers don't feel ready tonight, and that's a common feeling being square. It's a very difficult being in one space, it's very difficult being in shared space. It's a very emotional item to come into your room and never having to have, to share, uh, space to extend. So I sense in that part, it's very difficult. Uh, but, uh, I think, I'm not sure that it would be, uh, I'm not sure that we can just pretend and create an emergency out of thin air. Say that the board has the ability to do that.
Shame on you, shame on John Rubio.
So, President Ethel, I ask you a follow-up question.
The motion is, what exactly, is to direct the superintendent?
Yeah, close the school until it's ready.
And will it do that without noticing the public at all, that we created out of thin air, is that the item part of the agenda?
Yeah, and what is, what's your authority for being able to? My understanding of the Brown Act was we had, even for an emergency, like, two twenty-four hours.
So, again, we have a safety situation, and we can retroactively notice because of a safety situation. And that is, that if we're in the Brown Act, that if there's anything that comes up, whether emergency, we were notified this evening of a dangerous situation, right? And so, I'm feeling, I feel comfortable with this. What's the worst-case scenario in the Brown Act? If we have a Brown Act violation, is we have to undo our action? Given that they don't have the ability to go back in time, I'm willing to take the back for man for student safety.
Can I say a point of order? First thing you got to do is declare whether there's an emergency. I mean, four votes of the board to decide there's an emergency, and then you can make a motion to, to close the school or whatever you're going to do.
For those of you listening at home, uh, Mr. Houseby, retiring at this point. We need four votes of the board to declare emergency. I think we need to consult legal counsel to figure out. So I'm going to recess, uh, and, I will, we'll call legal counsel and figure out whether we can contain your motion, or whether, uh, Mr. Houseby's correct, and we just declare an emergency before we can.
I mean, I think, again, I'm sorry, the time, and I mean...
I, I, I agree with you about the time, but, um, alright. So, I'm going to, I'm going to recess the meeting, we're going to...
How long?
We're going to, uh, as long as it takes to get the thing to work out, alright.
It's all our protective job, it will be a responsibility.
Alright, we're, we're ready to, uh, meeting, that's where we get close. Dr. Rubio and I did consult the legal counsel, and, uh, she informed us that we are not authorized to take action on this item. It has been noticed, and this would not qualify, her opinion as emergency, the kind that, that the Brown Act would be an action on. Emergency, the Brown Act would be something, can't do that with disasters, and fire, or something, something like that. And that, that, that the Brown Act exists to inform the whole community what, uh, the actions of the public body might take, and we have not informed the rest of the community, who weren't here tonight, who are expecting the school to start tomorrow. We didn't get informed, we're not aware that the school might not actually start tomorrow. Might not, there might be issues around, that discuss taking action. So we're not, not authorized to take a vote on the side of taking full action. My, uh, own view is that we, that we have some very serious concerns expressed tonight, and, uh, you know, I, uh, want the superintendent to personally review the whole campus at seven o'clock in the morning. And make sure that there are any, any certain areas that might be dangerous, are, if such exists, are locked off. And, and there's no sort of solvents lying around, or sharp metal or wood or anything that, uh, students might hurt themselves with. And if we need extra staff, someone's brought in to supervise or, or guide. And, and we do that so that we're, we have adults around to keep, uh, quizzed the children from any potential dangers might exist, other, other than giving directions to the superintendent. We, we, we can't take action and the superintendent is not, um, you know, authorized by the SIS to take the kind of emergency action. Change the, the day.
So, can I ask, can I make a couple of quick comments on that here? I think first and foremost, weighing in a risk management perspective, the cost of having a Brown Act violation versus a child being injured and the exposure to the district, to me, is very easy decision to make. And the second thing is, legal advice from counsel is not binding. It is strictly their advice. So, even though the council says that we don't have an emergency, I disagree. I feel like the Brown Act says we just need a majority of board members to declare an emergency and take action. And it's an emergency not because legal counsel says so, it's an emergency because we as the board, we elected officials, declare an emergency. And then we're happy to let the courts come back and say, "Oops, you were wrong, you misdefined emergency." So I, once again, I call the question, and I'll restate my motion, which has been seconded. We have an emergency situation that requires us to direct superintendent to postpone the opening of school. And I would like to see it until after Labor Day, but I'll say until at least Monday. So, that was the original motion, I go back to it, I ask that we call the question.
Uh, go ahead.
What time are, if school were to happen all the time, are kids on site?
Uh, beginning of the year.
Now, seven, eight time, I just walked to the half of school, no.
Can you speak up?
Sorry, I said I just walked the hallway of, of half of school, I don't think that from seven to eight is enough time to ensure that the...
What, oh, Jesus, no.
I, I don't, if you were going to have kids here at eight AM, so, let me backtrack. You know, a few years ago, uh, the gym, however it is, we opened a new location. We opened a seven thousand square foot facility, we worked on it for months, we built a new gym. And then when it was supposed to open, there was, there was dozens of us, last minute stuff, and it, it, and that's just a seven thousand square foot gym, I don't think that one person can walk the space in an hour and ensure that all of the things that I, that even eyewitness just walking through would be taken care of. If you were going to try to have students on campus tomorrow at eight AM, it would require at least two dozen people here as early as six-thirty to walk the campus and then be able to, I mean, there are crates, boxes of, of stuff, that, I mean, there's a drill just inside these curtains, there are, I mean, the, the list is long. And you walk it once and you'll, you'll miss twenty percent. Then you'll walk it again, you'll catch another chunk, and you won't catch everything until the third or fourth time that you walk through, so.
Mr. Baker, can you respond to that, um, in terms of, what's, what's the capacity to, uh, whether it's five AM, six AM, six-thirty, uh, get a team of people here to make sure that the site is, should be safe?
Frankly, it's a logistical issue at this point, trying to get a large group here at five or six. Uh, the construction crews have been told they're to stay here all night long and not be here tomorrow. Uh, I've, I've not spoken with them since the recess to see what their, what their availability is. Um, it, it becomes a logistical difficulty notifying people.
Mr. Baker, there are some people on the Swinton team in terms of that we could, uh, help rewalk the site.
Certainly, but not at, at seven AM. I don't know, I can't go with a number, I consider the number of us, that we could have two or three people here, but I, I can't, I can go pull Turner right down and find out.
It's still not enough, it's still not, it's not going to be enough.
I, I don't think that's a problem, Mr. Baker, my opinion is to walk the site, to completely walk it, I, I don't, uh, I think it's, we, we can do that as long as, uh, we, we have some help from Swinton Turner in the morning at seven.
I can bring my, my stance to the table again. We allow these kids to have the orientation that they were neglected at the beginning of the week. These kids are coming to school tomorrow morning, do not know where their classes are, do not have curriculums for these classes. Therefore, it is already an orientation without you saying the words. These kids are the key for success. We are not backing their success at all. Having a couple of people come in the morning is not going to do this, this, this place any type of justice that we need. Literally, if we cared like we said we do, we would allow these children the proper respect of giving them an orientation so that they are comfortable in this state-of-the-art facility that we're all glaring eyed about. That we all star made and dream about. That I've sat in meetings and meetings and just different situations to make sure that future generations after myself were comfortable, because I know how it is. To have you all and to have everyone else sitting there pointing the finger like, "Look at Emery, look at Emery," one more time.
Brittany, do you feel that the, the facility would be ready for an orientation morning?
That, that's what it is. If you have no curriculum, it is an orientation.
Would you feel comfortable with students entering the campus tomorrow?
That is better than them not knowing.
I'm not comfortable with that.
I'm not comfortable either, but at the same time, there are children that are going to show up regardless of how comfortable we are. And there are parents that are going to show up regardless of how comfortable we are, and they're going to be upset. As parents, would you allow any of your children to sit up here and go to this school like this? Your son is attending school tomorrow.
And, um, I wouldn't feel comfortable, and, um, I'm sure to have that, and my son is excited, and he was over here on Monday, so...
He's excited about all these mud bounds and, yeah, as a little boy, I would be too, I definitely would be.
I, I agree with, I agree with your comment that tomorrow, as often is the case with the very first day of school, uh, even more so tomorrow here, with the new, new school, that it, it can be, it should be used to orientate students. We are not, you know, able to do anything other than, uh, to take any action to stop them. Parents and students are coming tomorrow, that, that, that's, that's set. You know, I, I, I would have preferred we started later, and I was in favor of a different schedule.
Without me?
But then it was explained to us that the, um, this is the schedule that the teachers wanted based on the, the time of year and holidays, etc. So, it is what it is at this point, and we haven't understood correctly the changes. So, we're faced with, no, we don't, and we can't, but we're not willing to, but I'm going to call the question because we're not, uh, not going to break the law.
To increase four.
We're not breaking the law.
Why the interest in that?
We are breaking the law.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask another question? Um, could we do a robo-call to inform parents of the current state of the campus and let them decide?
There is no decision, it's embarrassing.
If we can't, if we, if we can't actually direct that we don't run school tomorrow?
You cannot run school without a curriculum, you want these teachers to sit here and say kumbaya?
I would just certainly just help if I can. Of course, there is, uh, teachers have many curriculum materials, math is the only one I know that's taught, so just to clarify, that I don't know any teacher who doesn't have any curriculum.
They just sound the point and told you how much, we know how.
Even Mr. Davis, uh, has his books, and the stewardess is actually moving them up during the meeting, so, um, I think his curriculum situation was also rectified, but let me, let me just add, so the board knows technically speaking, as we roll to new SIS, uh, we do not have in place the ability, uh, tonight to robo-call the parents in the current SIS system. And I, I wouldn't be able to connect with all the parents.
Can you send it to the, you know, the sort of, uh, he's informing parents?
Yeah, I could do, I could do that, yes.
Both are still in transition, they're, it's, it's legal, it's signed off, but, you know, be aware that there's a lot of finishing touches still to be made, and, you know, we, we're using these opening days to orientate parents and students.
Yes.
And you and, and Swinton team, whoever, Mr. Baker can give for the Turbot team, will be taking every step to ensure that the facility is safe.
Yes.
I don't know what more we can do directly from here.
I'm, I'm still not happy with the legal advice, because I'm looking at the Brown Act right now, and it's very clear that we can, if we determine an emergency. We can discuss, I was not prepared to place an agenda in a regular meeting when the body determines there's a need for immediate action, which cannot reasonably wait until the next regularly scheduled meeting. We have a need for immediate action, we cannot wait until the next regularly scheduled meeting. So, I don't know what legal advice gave you, I'm beginning to doubt its validity based on what I had heard during the recess, and I can't make a situation where it... and I can't make a situation where children are unsafe. It is unsafe here in the opinion of multiple professionals who work with kids. It's unsafe in the opinion of multiple plurality, a majority of board members. So, we have the authority to take immediate action, we have a motion made and seconded, and I find it incomprehensible that you're not gonna call the question, and I don't even know that you have that authority to not call the question that has been, or that the motion has been made and seconded.
I guess Mr. Patz, I don't know if this may not help, but as far as I can tell, my best judgment is that a question on the same team of all of us up here cannot, it would be legally impermissible, you know, graphic, correct, in terms of, correct, that it is not legally permissible for us to vote on something without notifying the public, without a national acceptance of the process.
There's nothing in the right, uh, and it's, again, it's that need for immediate action. We have a need for immediate action, and I think the fact that you are dancing around that issue, and again, you know what? You have the ability to not vote on it. We're not asking you to vote yes, you can vote no, right? I'm just asking you to call the question and let the board, the legal authorities, make a decision.
And I'm kind of, I'm looking at the advice of ours, which is, uh, this is, does not rise to the level of emergency that the Brown Act, that are in question ever, uh, uh, can vote and consider legal. It is something ordered by the legislature, it's not something in the discretion of the body, um, you know, I don't decide what's an emergency. And, and, so, I, you know, I don't think we need it, and we haven't noticed that, but, you know, I'm, I'm, so, no, I'm not gonna call it.
That's tyrannical, looking tyrannical.
You, you use the right word there, it's advice of council, we don't have to follow it.
I understand your position, and, and we've got a meeting to move on, we've got other actions to take on.
Call the question.
You know.
Uh, is there any further direction that people would think we should be giving superintendent for tomorrow?
Close the school.
Call the question.
Remember Merrick? Yes, I'm just looking over the, the situation. Uh, Mr. Patz, I may have to ask, it's just a, a situation to count. What if, if we initiate this action, what is the plan, other than just declaring, uh, no school, whatever? What is the plan, if we just throw out a petition or a petition to say we close it? What is the plan, because, A, you can't have the contractor back on the site, you know, because it's a big, a big timeframe. You give him, he's still constrained by that same amount of time for work. So, if you think about that, you have, you're not giving a contractor any more time, um, so it's a minor work to get down this thing and get out of time. So, in order to get to a point where you want to have the school open, what are you going to do to facilitate that, or facilitate forward?
I count three, if not four, contractor days before Monday, right? So I'm not giving him any more time, but I'm giving him three more days to get the school ready. I'm giving Rubio three more days to tell the teachers where the bathrooms are, where the emergency exits are, right? The exit camps will show up tomorrow, because we've been dawdling since eight thirty on this issue, but time is what we don't, is what we need. And so, we don't have a plan A, let alone a plan B, but by going and taking this action and postponing the opening of the school, we get time to develop a plan A and a plan B, you know?
Uh, the superintendent's opinion and Mr. Baker's opinion, uh, inspector's opinion, the facility is not an emergency situation. We can respect the people, and it's that we don't have a business for emergency. The reality is, uh, it's nine forty-five at night, and hundreds of parents' children are going to be arriving tomorrow morning, uh, and we, 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 we have to be ready for business. So that's the reality of it, completely imperative, as a parent, expect other parents to, to be your age or child parents, so, um, that's the situation now. Pass public comment on the side, but Mr. Rogers, he's saying sixty seconds.
Yes, thank you, thanks for acknowledging me, and I'm paying for you to district my teacher. Teachers don't have a curriculum, you don't have it. How will you ensure as the board that tonight, that teachers will have the materials to teach? People can unpack and plan, many of those are unpacked. How will you ensure that teachers will have the curriculum that they need for tomorrow? How will you ensure that? And then how will you ensure that all these nails and struck things that are around the school, just go past this curtain and see the drill that's there? And see the metal that's there, see these boxes that contain them there, Adam is one person. How will you, how are you ensuring that all of this is gonna be done by seven? Because we're saying we're gonna leave here, and magically it's gonna be done at seven at the Walkford. Who's doing the work? That has to be a human being doing that. How are you gonna ensure that students will have their books tomorrow? Miss Matt, who's some of the books, she knows where they are, but they're, is my, are they in classrooms?
Nope, no, copy rooms.
They're not in classrooms?
Nope.
At the Anna Gate School. So how are you gonna ensure that in the morning, when these children come, they will be here in droves? And teachers are playing, we can't do games and icebreakers all day. How are you gonna ensure that we have books in the classrooms with teachers standing up, ready in the morning, numbered, and ready to be issued? How are you gonna ensure that?
I'm, I'm just concerned, uh, I'm concerned because of the email they sent with the simple task of the parents for that, I could go into assistance to do that, so I would prefer just to continue on, complete our agenda, and I know if you call that, the longer the process, the longer, the more, uh, I feel like there's disrespect in the account.
If you are to disrespect them, it's too late for that, it's too late.
We, I'm sorry, we've gotta, we've gotta get on.
No, 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 if you accepted one public comment, there's no need to stop now. When somebody approaches the podium, give them the proper respect, to give them at least a minute to say what they have to say.
Try to have the Brown Act provided.
I can finish, uh, we need to get on to our meeting, so we will, uh, sixty seconds, we'll have a minute, just one minute.
Okay, so, it's not so much as a comment, but more of a suggestion. Instead of just sitting there talking about things that's not gonna happen, and no solutions that you can reach, as they pop, pop the lights on, you guys break up in groups, start walking to school right now, and make sure that when those kids come in in the morning, that they are ready, whether they have their books or not. You cannot call school off, parents cannot call off of work at the last minute, because we are not, you guys are not organized, right? So, I wish it was as much put into the students and their attendance at school as it was the politicians that's gonna come to, uh, the RITF, everyone. That's way more organized than the kids getting ready, walking the door. I'm willing to go with a group, that's gonna make sure that when they come in the morning, that this place is right for them. Forget the rest of your agenda, that can wait. Right now, you have a priority, and students are prioritized. Now, this is supposed to be a joint building, I don't see any city council members, I don't see anybody from the city here trying to help you guys figure anything out. So, I suggest, instead of putting it on Dr. Rubio in an hour in the morning, what is he gonna do? What is he gonna do in the morning if things aren't right? So, you might want to decide to just stop your meeting right now, break up in groups, I'll go with someone to source my hit is, and let's make sure that when they come in in the morning, at least this place is right, or it looks right, and make sure it feels right. Other than that, what are you gonna do, sitting all night till two thirty o'clock in the morning, talking about stuff that's not gonna happen? Sometimes a school board, you gotta get up and you gotta take action.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Talk, you gotta talk to talk, but you gotta walk for walking. In the night, I suggest you start walking campus. I'm willing to go with you, just break up, and we can do it, we can make sure it's straight when they come in here in the morning. But it's not gonna happen, sitting there at your desk talking.
Mr. Baker.
Okay, uh, yeah. First off, there's a numerous noise ordinance violations here tonight. I'm not supposed to be working at, what, nine thirty, almost ten o'clock? But never mind that, because we've got something way more important here. And what's, what's important here is that Superintendent Rubio and President Affeld not be embarrassed. That's really, cut to the chase, that's what you're talking about here. What we're, the school is gonna be open tomorrow, come hell or high water, because those two men don't wanna be embarrassed publicly. Because if you were to do what your, that your professional teachers told you to do, with the concern about the safety of the children, if you were to assuage those desires of those professionals, you would be embarrassed, because the whole, you know, Bay Area would be talking about how you didn't get the school ready in time. So that's, let's, let's really stop mincing words, and let's, let's say it how it really is, and that's what's going on here. What we're trying to protect here is, is the, those two gentlemen from being embarrassed. And, you know, never again am I going to listen to you two tell me or any other parents that you're doing something for the children. Never again am I gonna listen to that, because clearly, that's not a concern of yours.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanna say as a matter of procedure, I don't think, if you have a motion in a second, you have to call a law. You can't sit there and decide whether you like your motion or not, even, even whether it's legal. I mean, the board can take an illegal action, and maybe later have to tell the council, but you can't stop the board from taking action. You got a motion second, you have to call a law.
What?
Okay, um, I think we're ready to move on to the next item.
I'd like Ms. Tamarine to take the role of the vote.
Dr. Stilt, you have to, there won't be a quorum. Me too.
I'm gonna, I just would remind the board that the teachers are depending on the board to, there's some other items on this that affect students, that affect teachers regarding positions, regarding, uh, I know, that we have coming up, so I was advised the board that we, um, all be professionals, and we get through our agenda, please, so I can get this email, and so I can start walking the campus tonight. I'm, I, I will, uh, we'll start walking in tonight, I'm running on two hours sleep, guys, I will do my best, I will get other people with me, and if you can shake your head all you want, but, but, but that's fine, that's, that's how you want that. But, but the thing is, but the thing is, is that I can start walking in tonight, uh, and I will get whatever hope I can get, and I will be here as early as I can be here, and I will continue to do my best to make sure our students are safe. And I wanna remind everyone in this room, I have high school students coming tomorrow who will not get my email. They're gonna be walking down the street, and I wanna know who in this room is responsible for them if something happens to be canceled school. So if anyone in here to tell me, that's me, that's correct. And therefore, I need people, I need everyone to think about the other side of this, there, there are lots of ways to look at this, and I have to look at the whole totality of safety. And I'm, I'm telling you in my professional opinion, if I were to just send out a lengthy email, "School's closed", and I miss fifty high school kids out of the two hundred that we're now at, by the way, that, uh, I have a problem, I have a safety problem, because those high school kids are walking around the city unsupervised. And so, I would, I'd toward the board that we continue to, uh, on our agenda, I would do everything I can.
So, again, professional, to call the question.
Yes, I mean, um, all I can do is, uh, not trust, I can trust your opinion, I can trust my opinion, I'm gonna trust the opinion of council, which is that we cannot entertain your motion.
You don't have a choice, you're selected, what motion do you entertain?
Well, that, apparently council thinks we do, so I'm gonna trust the legal counsel, uh, that we've, I've got advice for. And that's the best we can do at this hour, I'm sorry. So we're gonna move on to the next item, which is item six point one.
Thanks for letting me down again, I think so, we appreciate it.
And to Mr. Rubio's point about an eleventh hour, you should have made this call two weeks ago.
Yeah, exactly.
So, don't put this on us at this eleventh hour.
Yes, exactly.
So, you know, and, and President Affeld, once again, I am embarrassed by your lack of leadership for the district.
Sorry, Mr. Patz, but I, you know, I'm, I'm in, you know, shock, right, by your, with, you know, uh, really just to, to say that you are, you know... Go, go ahead, because I, I cannot stay that much longer. I've got a child, uh, in childcare, it's already ten o'clock at night, uh, this meeting is on, well past the, the most time, I'll be in for good reasons. We've got other action we need to take, and school's starting tomorrow.
Thank you. The purpose of this item six point one is for the board to consider following contract for potential speech therapists.
Shame on you.
Romantic contract, professional placement, resource speech services, gives us a one year contract for a speech therapist. Um, we're bringing this as a motion, uh, excuse me, this action item to the board, asking for your approval.
Shame on you.
Is this particular speech therapist, do you know, is this Cora here, uh, is this particular speaker fully credential as a speech therapist?
We're a unified school district, we do it for the children.
While Dr. Stilt is contracted with an agency that individual is protected.
Do you know if she has a, only credential? She, you could be an emergency credential, you could be a substandard credential, a regular standard credential.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for this Cora, the site? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have seconds, so vote both, please.
Number, yes, number Calm Rogers?
I'm sorry, Ms. Tamarine in here.
Number Mary?
Yes. Yeah.
Yes. Motion passes for the zero. I'm sorry, was there any public comment on, uh, my mistake? Motion, uh, stands and passes for the zero. Item six point three?
Yes, thank you. Item six point three is to ask the board to take action for approval of change order, uh, to turn it to destruction, report it to soil, uh, and this is for your approval, Mr. Baker, I don't know if you'd say anything about the action item six point three regarding the change order for reported soil.
I think given the hour, we're probably ready to, I don't know.
And maybe, uh, maybe Mr. Baker, just be available if questions before it has been raised. There may not be any questions.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Baker on this item, any public comment? We have a motion.
So moved.
Do we have a second? I'll second, uh, vote both, please.
Brand, number Calm Rogers, score? Number Mary?
Yes.
Number Pet?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously, uh, item six point four.
Thank you. Uh, this item is to ask for your approvals, a common language verbal contract, this is an already board-proved action item, um, and, uh, as you may recall, this is our second year of getting assistance from Mr. Kaplan, who is, uh, working closely with Mr. Rogers and the team, and in fact, they've been working quite good on smart procedures and safety, and, uh, we're bringing this to you to ask for your, whoops, am I looking at the wrong? No, I'm sorry, I have the wrong item, okay. Um, six point four, my apologies, uh, is that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is Jeff Kaplan's contract.
Okay, I'm sorry, so, uh, this is for, for your approval, thank you.
Uh, any discussion?
Just a minor thing, regarding, I think I have a request for the previous meeting having to do with you, to, to hire a kid, but just, uh, due to your due diligence to the, for another entity, uh, keep that in mind as far as we're under new contract.
Uh, that's, uh, that's correct, okay, I think you're referring to another contract, uh, regarding the, the other contract coming up.
That's six point five, okay, I'm sorry, no worries.
Yeah, uh, is, is this the last year we've been using Mr. Kaplan, or are you...
I think it's very possible, I don't think it's, it's, we've really benefited, I think, from Mr. Kaplan's work, I'm not sure that it's the most... I'm not sure that it's the most cost-effective way for us to continue this work, and we're always looking to be cost-effective. I think Mr. Rogers is taking on a lot of new duties as the out-of-classment coach and the support role, and the positive behavior enrichment, and, uh, Mr. Kaplan is also working with Mr. Rogers. So, I see this as a transition here for us, and aware, maybe I'm not sure, but we want to make sure we have, uh, support programs and systems in place, and I, and I have great confidence in Mr. Rogers helping to make sure that happens with, uh, Mr. Kaplan.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Any public comment? Uh, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second? On second, uh, roll call, please.
Number Ash?
Yes.
Remember Calm Rogers?
Sure.
Remember Merrick?
Yes.
Remember Patz?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. We're on to item six-point-five, approval of educator effectiveness plan.
Yes, thank you. This is the second reading for the board, as required by the policies around this money coming out of the state and from the government, uh, and, uh, this work is related to what we were just talking about regarding Member Patz's request that we kick the tires, uh, on this item. I did do some more background checking, and the board is okay with that, I'm sure at this point. Uh, I didn't realize this, and I appreciate Member Patz bringing it up. I didn't realize, I think, and Member Patz, I'm sure you'll help me if I get this wrong, but he mentioned a couple individuals in particular, Sharaki Hawley, I believe, and Anthony Muhammad. I didn't know they had been throughout this district before and done, had, had done work in our district, that was unfamiliar with me. I got some feedback from staff that, one, uh, they, they valued the work of Sharaki Hawley, but that they thought the, the work they've experienced so far this spring with Mr. Singleton, which, um, that they believe is, and I think I agree with him, is larger systemic work, uh, was valuable. Uh, they feel like the work with Mr. Singleton is at a very different level for us, uh, and so it was good to get that feedback, I know we had that history with, uh, Sharaki Hawley. And they, uh, the feedback we got also was that, uh, the, the work of, uh, Anthony Muhammad is more around the school, uh, school culture than it is around equity. So, the staff's feedback to me was, uh, you've got us hooked, we're on this path with you, we believe in it, uh, we're happy as superintendent you're participating, because they have, they felt that was a good thing, and, uh, in terms of this kind of work and the importance of it. So, uh, I wanted to bring that information back to you. My recommendation as superintendent, uh, you, you know, I know it's on task to make these decisions, but I believe that this is the right way to go for us, and it's valuable work for us, particularly around student achievement.
And, uh, there's a board role in, in part of training development?
There, there is, and, uh, Mr. Singleton's, uh, uh, very enthusiastic about getting to work with the board, as he's done across the country with other boards, to make sure that we're all involved in this work. Yes.
Okay, well, I'm looking forward to hearing more about that. Uh, any other questions or comments on the side? Any public comment?
Yes.
Actually, we let the, um, Annie Yates staff with, uh, through an equity training today. It's very valuable. I'm familiar with Sharaki Hawley's work, I'm familiar with the National Equity Project's work, Anthony Muhammad's work. I really like the work, uh, the California, I mean, Pacific Educational Group, um, because they really make teachers sort of look at our own practice and our biases that are in the way. Um, we have tons of curriculum as teachers, and we have tons of practice with how to work with kids in differentiating instruction in the classroom, but the work that they do helps to break down, um, the barriers that are, um, not allowing our students to have equal access to, um, everything in our society. The work that they do is quite remarkable, um, and I highly recommend it, and every teacher that was a part of it, um, likes it.
Thank you for, any more?
We definitely needed place my foot, and the action of the board tonight, and I'm not being critical, but we need equity training, all of us.
Thank you for sticking around and making your comment and offering your support. Any other public comment? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Number Ash?
Yes.
Remember Calm Rogers?
Yes.
Remember Merrick?
Yes.
Remember Patz?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. We are on to the final item, action item.
Yes, thank you. This is the, uh, request for approval of the actual contract itself. Uh, we brought these to you as parallel items, and that's for you for your approval, and uh, this is the same work we're discussing right now, or previously, just discussing, excuse me.
Comments, questions? Any public comment? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Number Ash?
Yes.
Remember Calm Rogers?
Sure.
Remember Merrick?
Yes.
Remember Patz?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. All right, uh, thank you, folks, for looking through that. Uh, we are now on the board reports and announcements. Any board reports or announcements?
I have something I'd like to say. Um, since we are now at a place that, um, students will be here tomorrow, um, I have a suggestion that maybe, um, an email go out and, and inform parents of, you know, what tomorrow could look like, and ask for help. Parents are available and willing to come sweep a hallway, or to pick up stuff off the floor, or anything. All hands on deck tomorrow are going to be needed, and I can make myself available tomorrow to come and help with that work, but that would be my suggestion if you're going to plan on having students on campus, and you ask for the help that we very, very much need tomorrow.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you. Any other reports or announcements?
Calendar review, excuse me, next. Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, our next board, excuse me, our board retreat is next Saturday on August twenty-seventh at nine AM. Uh, we have the, uh, ECL ribbon-cutting ceremony at ten AM on, I believe that is Thursday, September first. Uh, there is a community meeting that's not listed, I believe, here on review, following day on Friday, a community open house as well for ECL. I believe, uh, that that is at six PM on the Friday, September the second, and our next board trustees meeting is on Sep, excuse me, on September the fourteenth at six PM.
Can I make a request at the board retreat? I know we have talked about having a Brown Act training. I'd like to hear the attorney address the two issues that were brought up today. So, when you agendize that meeting, um, I request that you, whether or not a question cannot be called, and whether or not, what constitutes an emergency action by the board, because I think we want to, I want to pursue that further.
I second that motion, I think that's, uh, I agree with the motion for the suggestion. Um, I think we, we all want to learn as we're wading through decent, kind of sticky and difficult questions, so I look forward to that discussion. Thank you, Member Patz, for the suggestion.
Thank you. Please have a good night.
All right, um, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.